I will call this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page for the link. I do have a number of condolences this evening since our last meeting. Please help, please join me in recognizing William Metcalf, U.S. Army, passed away on August 8th, 2024. John Davies, U.S. Navy, passed away on May 17th, 2025. Harvey Shore, U.S. Air Force and U.S. Navy, passed away on May 19th, 2025. Peter Mazafaro, U.S. Army, passed away on May 30th, 2025. Bruce Langlin, U.S. Marines, passed away on June 10th, 2025. James O'Neal, U.S. Marines, passed away on June 12th, 2025. William Heerman, U.S. Army, passed away on June 17th, 2025. And Norman Nelson, U.S. Army, passed away on July 7th, 2025. Please join me in a moment of silence for these veterans, their family, and all Bridgewater veterans who have passed. Thank you. Okay, we'll be starting with approval of minutes from previous meetings. We have two meeting minutes for approval tonight. Do I have a motion for approval for June 17th, 2025, meeting minutes?
Go move.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Lindy and Dr. Perry. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Next, June 30th, 2025, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Counselor Hunn. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor, approval?
Aye.
And any opposed? Seeing none. Announcements from the President. I actually don't have anything prepared tonight. We have a big agenda and we've got plenty to discuss, but no announcements from me this evening. What we do have next are proclamations. So we do have proclamation for Korean War Armistice Agreement Day, which we will recognize on July 27th, later on this month. I do have attendance here tonight. Mr. William, otherwise known as B. Levy. In attendance, he's a lifelong Bridgewater resident and a Korean War veteran, currently resides on Aldrich Road. He entered the U.S. Army on January 8th, 1952, and was soon sent to fight in the Korean War. His awards include the Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Korean Service Medal, United Nations Korean Service Medal, Republic of Korea Korean War Service Medal, Army Meritorious Unit Citation, and the Republic of Korea Presidential Unit Citation. I would like to also read into the record the proclamation that we have, and we'll present it to Mr. Levy and our Veterans Agent, Mr. Greg Mart. Whereas on July 27th, 1953, the Korean Armistice Agreement was signed, marking the end of active combat in the Korean War. And whereas this agreement brought an end to the hostilities on the Korean Peninsula, laying the foundation for a ceasefire that has held for over seven decades. And whereas the Town of Bridgewater endeavors to honor all of the soldiers who served during the Korean War, who fought for this cause. And whereas the Town of Bridgewater expresses their deepest gratitude to the Korean War veterans and their families, who sacrificed so much for the freedoms we have today. And whereas it is our duty to remember and reflect upon the significance of the Korean Armistice Agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council does hereby proclaim July 27th, 2025, to be Korean War Armistice Agreement Day. Be it further resolved that the Town Council encourages all residents to take a moment on this day to honor the courage, sacrifice, and enduring legacy of Korean War veterans, and to reflect on the importance of peace, resilience, and unity. Signed this day, this 15th day of July, 2025. Yes. So at this time, I'd like to ask a counselor to make a motion to take Executive Session Item Q out of order.
Motion made.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Hunt?
And do I have a second?
Yes.
And Mr. Lindy?
Thank you, Counselor Strickles.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
So the Town Council will be moving into Executive Session, and we'll be hopefully I'll entertain a motion to, which we just, to move into Executive Session pursuant to right back in regular session after the Executive Session is complete. The Executive Session will be taking place in the room next door, Conference Room 201A. MGL Chapter 30A.
I have a vote on how to take out of order.
Oh. So you all can stay in your seats, and we'll be back.
A vote taken out of order.
I'm sorry. Do I have a motion for approval to take out of order?
We'll be back after these messages.
So moved.
The time is now 7:40, and I will call us back into session, back into order here. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? We will continue on with our agenda. We have Item D, citizen open forum. So, sorry about that. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Requirements, discussions will not take place during public That was clumsy. So we're going to move into Executive Session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, A3, comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the Town Manager to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have at a future Town Council meeting. Anyone make comment at this time for up to three minutes? Please state your name and address for the record. a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares. Bridgewater Firefighters Union, Local 2611, Bridgewater Police Association, Bridgewater
Rayo Jemmy, Aldrich Road.
Administrative Association, and United Steelworkers, Local 9517, Unit 04.
I just wanted to tell you that I'm neighbor to B. Levy, one of the greatest guys ever
So entertaining a motion to now move into Executive Session.
wanted me. He'll tell you his opinion whether you want it or not, all the time.
So moved.
He's a good guy.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Strickles.
Rayo Jemmy, Aldrich Road. I'm here just briefly, just to give you a quick update on Tree Committee.
So we'll need a roll call vote to go into Executive Session.
Mr. Kennedy?
First of all, two things. First of all, I went to the yearly DCR meeting on Tree Committees that were, the towns and
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
cities that were awarded to Tree Committee in Malton in June.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
And we, as Bridgewater, have reached our 12th time that we are Tree Committee.
Mr. Murphy?
Not consecutively. We were, we stopped in the early 90s, and this Tree Committee brought us back these last two times. So we are now in Tree Committee again, as you know. We, one of the things that we got, you should be aware of, is they make a calendar every year, and our, Nicole Holmes, who works on the Tree City Assignment, worked with students at William School to draw pictures of importance of trees, and one of our students got it again. So we're proud of that. We also got, which I'm reluctant to even mention to you, is a four-by-six Tree City flag. Now, should I even bring up the fact that we need a flagpole? Okay, second thing, in all seriousness. The Tree Committee has been working, and I think we've accomplished some things. We have a lot to do. One of the things that we made progress on with the interim Town Manager was hiring a on-call tree warden. We've been pushing for that for a long time. Now, obviously, as she pointed out, that the budget does not allow us to hire a full-time tree warden, even a part-time. So we have an on-call tree warden. I just want you to be notified that that particular person was at our meeting last week, and he's already made progress. He already notified us that a number of the trees on the common are diseased and are dying. So we have a lot to do, and we're hoping that as we move forward, understanding that there's a tight budget, that we can do some things, because trees are important to this town. And a lot of things have to be taken care of, but also the trees. So we're hoping that we're working with the new Town Manager, that we can move forward on a number of different projects, in particular, a tree mitigation formula, so that the planning board can legally ask for money when trees are cut down from developers. So that's basically it, and we'll try to keep you informed as time goes on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you guys doing? Brad McKinnon, 86 Spring Street. Haven't been here since the election, so I have to say congrats to Johnny and Kevin on re-winning your election. I want to welcome Mary Lee and Sean, both to your new roles, and congratulate you on your wins. And I got to give a shout out to Justin, our new Town Manager. Welcome to town, good luck with everything. I'll definitely reach out to you at some point, would love to talk to you whenever about things, just fill you in. You know, I always told everyone these ears get a lot of things, they hear a lot of things, I mean. And I mean, I've already heard some things about you in a week, on how you want to run this town like a family, and I think that's awesome. So I do appreciate you coming to town and wanting to be a part of the process in Bridgewater. You're going to be talking a lot about water today, so I felt like coming in and just bringing up some talking points that you guys could probably ask that might benefit the town, including the tines. I mean, we've all talked about, I mean, I've talked about the tine prices a few times, how I wanted to bring them down, but then I realized, hey, with all the big projects we have coming in, it's some good money we can put towards our water. I mean, Lemays, you got two six-inch, that's $175 a pop. Perkins, every building's going to need six-inch pipes, et cetera, et cetera. There's almost enough money to replace a well when it was said, when we paid 1.9, you're pretty close to that with just those tine fees alone. Like I said, maybe look, if we have a clean water enterprise, put that money in, and a few other things along those lines. Maybe talk about the prison with their wastewater treatment facility, see how things are going on over there, see if they've started Phase 1 or not. I mean, we're talking about Phase 2 for our town too, so that's another good talking point possibly. Then I want to thank Alice Erda and Dave Moore when it comes to getting that flagpole donated for the Town River Landing. Then I need to thank Dennis, Mark Lindy, and Paul Murphy, and of course, the real muscle, your son, who showed up to help move the telephone pole from Henry Perkins across the street, all the way down Spring Street, to the Town River Landing. That was a cool process. Speaking of the Town River Landing, the 26th, there's another farmer market there. Every last Saturday of the summer, there's a farmer market, just for an FYI. And just something for you guys to look in on my last note, I paid attention in other towns, and I watched a Lakeville Planning Board meeting, and you guys should probably look into 40 Ys. It's not much information on those, but I don't really like the sound of four starter houses with three bedrooms and two bedrooms, ah, three bedrooms and two bathrooms being able to go on one's acre. That's what a 40Y is, and there's other stuff, so maybe just get educated on that while the other town is too. And that's it for my comments. You guys have a great summer, and we'll see you in August.
Thank you, Brad.
Good evening. I hope I can get through my comments. I have a bit of a frog. Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street, welcome to Justin, nice to meet you. I never give up trying to get people on the dance floor. And we have a Saturday night special coming up, Bridgewater Community Dance sponsoring. And I know that when you get on the floor, and you make a circle, and you hold hands, it makes you look at people differently, and usually in a very positive way. And I know that Ms. Ellenberg has joined in a couple of times, and I think Ms. McGrath might be leaning a little bit. So I brought some flyers, and I'm hoping maybe some of you will join us on July 26th at the Cedar Street Center. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Gina Gasconi, 35 Wall Ave, and Chair of our Community Preservation Committee. First, I'd like to welcome Justin to town, wish you all the luck here, and look forward to working with you. I'll make this short. I would like to congratulate the Hanson family and thank them for having the insight to preserve their land from development. As many of you know, the town has acquired the conservation restriction for that, which was paid through an MVP grant from the state, with the balance paid through community preservation. The conservation restriction is done and filed. Money has been transferred to the Hanson's, the three siblings. Signs are being produced now. The only thing that still needs to be done, other than installing the signs, is to actually build the trails. There will be two trails around the farmland. So bridges need to be built over the wetlands. So that's it to be done. We're looking to, to have a ceremony, probably, as we know, summer is huge farming time, so probably in the fall, September, October, once the busy time gets done, having a ceremony there, or the creation of a restriction. There's so many people that I would like to thank for working on this project. I shouldn't attempt to name anybody, because I'll know I'll forget somebody's, but I'm just going to suffice it as, I'd like to, special thanks to Blithe Robinson, the former acting Town Manager, Attorney Rollins, for all his many, many hours of working on the project. Community Preservation Committee, especially Carlton Hunt, who has spent hours and hours on this project. And as I said, there's so many other people to thank that I don't want to miss anybody. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carlton Hunt, 80 Oss Street, welcome aboard, sir. I look forward to seeing you and meeting with you on Energy and Community Preservation Committee. Thank you. Two meetings ago, I asked the counselors to do a deep read of the Town Charter, the Admin Code, and the Council Rules and Procedures. If you did, you understand that no measure takes effect until 30 days after passage. I served on the first Charter Review Committee, which recommended a 30-day window be shortened, but it was not acted on by the Council. I note that any further charter changes in this area, and to that recommendation, would need to accommodate the 10-day rule that enables an initiative or referendum filing by the citizens of Bridgewater in terms of measures that were passed by the Town Council. In other words, the citizens have the right to challenge anything you pass. Note that Section 8.4 of the Charter has eight exceptions to this 30-day rule. Most of the exceptions are related to financial measures and actions. However, Item 3 exempts internal operational procedures of the Town Council. I am not sure what that falls under, what falls under that phrase. I request the Council ask the Town Attorney for an explanation. It's important to understand what internal operational procedures are. The Administrative Code in Section 8, under Community and Economic Development Department, Item E, Organizational Components, Number 2, Economic Development Function, defines the role of the CED Department. The department is assigned, quote, "development of strategies to retain and attract businesses" on page 85. The strategy development charge specifically includes using a variety of tools, including tax increment funding, TIFs, and district increment financing, DIFs, as strategy. I request the Council respect the Administrative Code stipulations. There is no reason for the Council to assume the economic strategy development function assigned by code to the CED Department in its advisory role to the Town Manager. Engaging the department charged with developing these strategies is a more efficient use of time and expertise, especially when counselors have stated their time is limited. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to appointments. First up, we have Parks and Recreation, these are reappointments. First up is Mark Thomas. This is for 2025 to 2028. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is Gina Gasconi, 2025 to 2028. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have TIF Ad-Hoc Oversight Committee for 6286 Broad Street. First up, I have Mr. Dan Greenberg. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion?
Yes. So I have a question through you to the Town Council. If Mr. Greenberg is on the Zoning Board of Appeals, which he's a member of, and he deals with an issue in the TIF Committee, would he then need to recuse himself on the same issue if it goes before the ZBA?
Likely, yes, but I would have to know the specific facts. At a minimum, it creates some sort of an appearance of a conflict. It may not be an explicit conflict financially, but there, it would at least create an appearance, I would assume, which he could waive by way of doing a letter in the normal course. But it would have to be specific facts based on what comes before each board.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question. I watch the zoning board a lot. Is Mr. Greenberg the newest member on the zoning board? Do you know? I'm just wondering why he was picked, because there are other ones that have been on the zoning board longer.
He's the newest full-time member. We have a new associate member. Mr. Greenberg, by profession, works for a development company. He's been on as long as I've been here, so he's new, but he's been on the board for at least three years. I don't think Mr. Heath or Anna have the time or their law practices to be part of this committee.
All right, one more question. Why are we doing zoning rather than not planning for a form-based code? Because this is the first form-based code, and the planning knows a lot about the form-based code, right? I'm just questions to ask, who picked him and why?
This is just from the Town Manager's office. They offered these appointments.
Well, Blithe's not here, so I was just wondering if any of the councils had given her advice on who?
No.
No? Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yep. This is one of the only things on this agenda that I was actually contacted about, and both positions for this were requested that a no vote, at least for myself, was on. I know that there is a need to get this moving along, get these filled, and I know these were requested by the previous Town Manager, so that's kind of where I'm sitting on this myself. It may or may not change the vote, but that's what I was contacted by multiple residents on, and I'm going to go that way on this myself, so.
Okay.
I'd have a comment, simply because of Dr. Hunt mentioning that this is in opposition to the Charter. So I'm going to vote against it, just because it's in opposition to the Charter to have this committee, since that's something that our department is supposed to handle, not the Council.
Town Counselor Rollins, can you speak to, is this a violation of the Charter to make these appointments?
It's the Admin Code, I believe.
What, what section? I'm not sure.
It's the Admin Code.
What about the, what about it?
It says that a TIF and a DIF is supposed to go to the CED Department in the Charter.
You created an ad hoc committee. An ad hoc committee can review anything the Town Council is contemplating. The Town Council has every authority to create those ad hoc committees, so I would disagree. I think the Council had the authority to create the ad hoc committee. It says it in the Charter that you're able to create ad hoc committees. You created one, you're having an ad hoc committee look at it. That's step one in what could conceivably be a very long process. There may be other steps, and there will be other steps along the way. But what you're voting on tonight, my understanding is, you created a committee, you said there needs to be five members, and you're voting who those five members are going to be. So I disagree, and if it were a violation of the Charter, that wasn't brought up when you created the committee to begin with. But I believe it isn't, because I believe the Council actually has the ability to create ad hoc committees.
Yes, Ms. Lindy.
I think, if I remember correctly, and through you to Counsel Dr. Perry, didn't you have a proposal that Council President appoints members to ad hoc committees that is currently pending?
Yeah, but it's not in place yet, so it's right now still appointment by Town Manager.
Right, I understand that, but I personally don't think Town Manager should appoint ad hoc committee members to a Council Committee.
This is why I brought that up originally, but it's got to go through a Charter change in order to make official.
Because the Charter requires that.
Correct.
That the Town Manager.
But we're going through that process.
Right.
It's our agenda type.
Just one more question. So the Downtown Ad-Hoc Revitalization Committee does not have Town Manager appointments. Those were appointed by the Council President. So how does it differ?
I have never looked at that committee. I have no idea how that committee was comprised. I don't know who appointed the people in that committee. I would, I'm happy to look at it, if you'd like me to. Not sure how that's relevant to the appointment of ad hoc committee members, but I'm happy to look at that, certainly.
Yeah, definitely like to look into that.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that due to the potential conflict of interest, I will also be a no vote.
What, if I may ask you, what conflict of interest?
The fact that he is on the zoning board and would have zoning issues arise in the DIF or TIF, and could put himself in a conflict of interest, that he's already voted one way on the DIF or TIF and another way on the zoning board.
If I may to Mr. Ruley, because, because he's here, is this project going, is it within the purview of the ZBA? To my understanding, this is being built to form-based code and will not be seen by the ZBA.
That's correct.
So there won't be any conflict? So there won't be any conflict of interest. I'm not trying to persuade your vote, I just wanted to have the facts on the table.
Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I think if we were to go by what Dr. Hunt was speaking about, it takes away the residents' voice. The residents elected us as counselors to be their representatives, so if we hand something over strictly to a CED
So the downtown ad hoc revitalization committee does not have town manager appointments. Those were appointed by the council president. So how does it differ?
I have never looked at that committee. I have no idea how that committee was comprised. I don't know who appointed the people on that committee. I would, I'm happy to look at it if you'd like me to. Not sure how that's relevant to the appointment of ad hoc committee members, but I'm happy to look at that, certainly.
Yeah, definitely like to look into that.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say that due to the potential conflict of interest, I will also be a no vote.
What, if I may ask you, what conflict of interest?
The fact that he is on the zoning board and would have zoning issues arise in the DIF or TIF. And could put himself in a conflict of interest that he's already voted one way on the DIF or TIF and another way on the zoning board.
If I may to Mr. Ruley, because, because he's here, well, is this project going, is it within the purview of the ZBA? To my understanding, this is being built to form-based code and will not be seen by the, the ZBA.
So there won't be any conflict.
So there won't be any conflict of interest. I'm not trying to persuade your vote, I just wanted to have the, the facts on, on the table.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I think if we were to go by what Dr. Hunt was speaking about, it takes away the residents' voice. The residents elected us as counselors to be their representatives. So if we hand something over strictly to a CED department, we take a little bit of that power away from being able to do the work of our residents, in my opinion. So I do think that an ad hoc committee is still the proper approach. And as we just learned, we are falling well within the form-based code with this particular project that the TIF district would be based around. So I don't see a potential conflict of interest. I actually see his expertise as something that will be beneficial.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one more. I just want to state one more time for the record that I absolutely believe that there was a CED committee in place that could have handled this work.
Noted. Any other comments from the counselors? I just want to remind everybody that, you know, while we are setting, while we have set up an ad hoc committee, that this is going to come back to the town council, and we will all have our, our vote and our, and our say as to how we move forward with the proposed TIF. So I wanted to just remind everybody of all that, that at the end of the day, we all have a final say here. Okay, so with that being said, Debbie, may I please do a roll call on this one?
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Strills?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
And Mr. Lindy?
No.
Five in favor, four opposed.
Okay, we'll move on to the next appointment. This is the same committee, and this will be for Mr. Fred Chase. Do I have a motion for approval and discussion?
So moved. Second.
And is there any discussion on Mr. Chase's appointment?
I have, this is just what I've been talked about from the residents. They would like to see Mr. Chase not be on this case because he's a former town council, and it takes the opportunity away for a resident or a committee member to be participating in an ad hoc. So that's, that's what I've heard from my residents.
Okay. Dr. Perry?
Yes. On the contrary, I think his prior experience as a town council and the number of years he spent involved in, in community and economic development would be an asset to this ad hoc committee.
Thank you.
I'm just going to reiterate what I said with the first appointment. This is one of the few things that I was reached out about, voting no on. So I, I will be a no vote on this. And I just wanted to add, this may not be a requirement for TIFs or for any positions outside of, I know the reappointments are not, we don't need applications or resumes with those, but I would like to in the future see resumes for anybody that we're going to appoint on anything unless it's specifically said they're not required, like reappointments, because previously we did appoint people who did not submit resumes for positions as well, just to inform the council. I think that's just good practice, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a roll call?
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Ms. Hunt?
Although I'm opposed to the committee, I'm for Mr. Chase. So yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Five in favor, four opposed.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we will now move on to hearings. We have two hearings tonight. We have the proposed ordinance FY twenty-five dash zero-ten, proposed amendment to chapter one fifty-seven, article two, section one. This hearing has been duly advertised in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five enterprise. Rules and procedures voted three-zero to recommend with amendments to their, rather at their May twenty-seventh meeting. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. It is eight oh-five, and I'll ask Counselor McGrath and Counselor Lindy if they would like to comment on their, their ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a couple of groups that come before the town council to speak why their flag should be flown, and I have been speaking for almost a year to have this flag flown, flown for a group that otherwise has no voice. Eighty-three thousand one hundred and sixty-five soldiers who have not come home. So I hope that finally after about a year, we can get this amendment passed and the flag can stay up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Lindy, anything to add?
And I also concurred and co-sponsored it. This is the flag, the POW MIA flag that we have outside of the town council chambers. This would not take the place of other flags flown in other locations with the American flag. It's just specifically for our academy building.
Thank you. Okay, are there any general questions from the public? Anyone from the public would like to speak in favor? And is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in opposition? I'll, I'll open the floor to counselors if they have any comments or, or questions. Counselor Kennedy?
I agree with what was said already. Also supported this on rules and, I think this is a good thing for us to be doing. I think it's good to represent the people who gave everything for us collectively as an entire country, along with what the American flag represents. I think that's something we should fly beneath it year-round, so I definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from counselors?
Hi, just a very technical question on this, and maybe I'm just overthinking this, and maybe counsel can weigh in. But number four, it says during any period of display, a flag approved for public display in a manner prohibited hereby should be flown beneath the flag of the United States and We just had two ceremonies that took place at the library that were approved for display. And so maybe again, I'm overthinking it, but if we approve a flag for display, and the language in here is telling us specifically that flag needs to be flown below the POW flag here, right? So should it say in a manner of only at the town academy building?
I think.
It's already stated that it's.
It's in the whereas section, but you may, it's not a bad idea to amend the actual order to reflect that.
I just want to make sure this order doesn't dictate where all other public display flags end up.
And if you actually look at the third whereas section, that's where it states.
Speaks to the academy building.
Right, at the academy building. But though, as you all know, the whereas section is kind of just explaining what you're approving. It isn't the actual order, so it's probably wise to include that specific language in the order. I mean, clearly someone could look back and look at the whereas and what the intent of the ordinance was, but maybe in the plain language of it itself, it may not be a bad idea to include that.
So can I make a, a motion to amend and just add that a flag approved for public display at the town academy building in the manner prohibited by be flown beneath? So just in the case of where it ends up here, it does fly beneath the POW flag, but doesn't dictate that any other flag should be flown here either. There are other opportunities in town, I think. That's what I'm trying to say.
I'll second.
Second? And any discussion on the amendment?
Yeah. And number four at the bottom there? With the paragraph that says during any period of display, comma, at the town academy building, a flag approved for display can continue on.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the amendment?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that is, as, as amended now to state in front of the academy building, that I think that makes sense. So we're now going to, thank you. We're now going to close the public hearing at this time, which is eight-ten. And I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Thank you, please, Dr. Perry. And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next we have, next hearing, proposed ordinance FY twenty-five dash zero sixteen, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article Four, Section Four dash Three, Town Manager Powers of Appointment. This hearing has been duly advertised in the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five enterprise. Rules and procedures voted three-zero to recommend with amendments at their May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. I will now open the public hearing. It is now eight-eleven, and I'll ask Dr. Perry if you would like to add anything.
Again, as, as mentioned earlier, basically this is to address ad hoc committees formed by the council, so we're looking to change the responsibilities of appointment of those ad hoc committees to the town council president as opposed to the town manager.
Thank you.
And it does have to, again, go to, be approved of the state legislator because it is a, it's a charter change.
Okay, yeah, and then it has to be voted on by the voters as well.
And by the voters of the town.
Are there any general questions from the public at this time? Seeing none? Is, anyone from the public would like to speak in favor? Seeing none? Anyone from the public would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none? And any comments or questions from counselors?
Yep, I just have a comment on the, the amendment that we were looking into for rules and procedures. What I proposed that we agreed on to bring to the council was changing it from a majority vote to a two-thirds vote. That would ensure that the overwhelming majority of the council agrees on the members of this in opposed to just a five-four split. So we discussed that. We thought that that was a good idea. It would make sure that all the council members really are on board with this. So that's what we put forward. So I'm going to make a motion to amend this document, and that amendment would be to remove majority vote and change that to a two-thirds.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. So as amended, we'll be voting on this, established by a two-thirds vote of the town So any other questions or comments from counselors as it is amended? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, I need to close the hearing at eight-twelve, so we could retroactively do that. Okay, license transactions, we have none. We are now on to presentations, water and sewer rate presentation from Raftellus.
My name, my name is Toby Federer. I am a senior manager with Raftellus. As a firm, Raftellus provides financial consulting to utilities nationwide with a, a strong focus on the water and sewer utilities. Core amongst our activities are studies very similar to this, and I'm happy to answer any questions as we proceed through the study, so feel free to jump in and ask questions as they arise. Hopefully I will answer many of them as we get, as we proceed through the presentation, but by all means, I don't have a cadence I need to stick to. Right now, I've set this up to be somewhere around a thirty to forty minute presentation, and I'm happy to take questions for as long as there are questions, so. So that being said, I wanted to provide some opening thoughts, because we are going to be talking about some pretty significant changes that are coming to the water and sewer utilities. As you know, I'm sure as everyone in the room is aware, Bridgewater operates its water utilities enterprise funds. That, that means they, for, for lack of other legal terminology, that basically means that they are operated as a separate account on town books, and they are intended to self-fund. And so when we're talking about rates and we're talking about the expenses to the utility, we're, we're basically identifying goals and making recommendations with the idea that these utilities remain self-funding. So, so that being said, presumably everyone has seen at least the, the presentation that was put out, but Bridgewater is definitely not the only community that, that is going through this issue, pardon me, in Massachusetts right now. There are on both sides of the tap, as we refer to it, both the clean water side for drinking as well as the wastewater side after the tap. There are new and evolving regulatory requirements that are applying to the enterprise funds that, that must be complied with. We'll talk a little bit about that. There's been a rapid increase in infrastructure costs from the standpoint of construction over the course of the past four years that, in truth, was, was much more quickly occurring than as we've seen for the last decade and a half. We are looking in Bridgewater with some potential for growth-related surface expansion and costs. Accommodation, a portion of that is really accommodation of some, some of the state-mandated housing requirements that, that are not just for MWRAC communities, but in, in larger, the, the full state. And then really, one of the things is the recommendations that we're going to be talking about tonight are trying to ensure equitability amongst the various customers. These are, these are public goods, they're public utilities. We want them to operate fairly for all users. So on to the right-hand side. Bridgewater is entering into a, depending on how long you look, it's the, the amount of money that is going to be spent on capital spending, because that's what we're going to spend quite a bit of time talking about tonight, is what needs to be done in order to maintain compliance with the laws that oversee these utilities. But you're going to be entering into periods of very significant capital spending, and I believe on the wastewater side, obviously, you've already commenced that process, but it's going to continue going on. Concurrent with the changing requirements that are going to be needed just to maintain compliance, you are having issues associated with growth and needing to identify new sources on the water side. And this is, I would say, the perfect time for a community to be looking at these questions. Definitely before the bill starts to come due is the time to make sure that we have an equitable system, and that's really what the goal is, is to get us set right so that as these costs come on, all of the residents of Bridgewater understand that, yes, while costs are going up, everyone's being treated fairly. And really being in the public utility business, Bridgewater does not have a choice about whether much of these things are going to be done. And so jumping into what your current practices are, on both sides of the tap, as it's for both the water utility and the sewer utility, Bridgewater has, raises revenue for these enterprise funds with a payer of both fixed charges analogous to, for example, on your electric bill, you have a charge to, you know, have the electric meter on your home, and then you pay for the kilowatt hours. For water and sewer, basically you have a fixed charge for being connected to the system, and then you pay an inclining rate block structure on both sides, although there is some variation between the two. And when I say inclining rate block structure, that means the more you use, the more expensive the use of the resource gets. And that's not just appropriate to many ways, to many people's thinking, but it's also something that's highly encouraged by the state, and sometimes is taken into consideration when you're looking for state funding, so is with the state revolving fund and things along those lines. Okay, so a water and sewer rate study at a glance. Unfortunately, the colors really aren't showing up on the projector, but it's really a four-step process in the sort of two, two primary thrusts of the study. On the right-hand side, the first step one and step two, their goal is really to identify how much revenue we're going to need to be raising in order for each of the utilities that we're, that we're looking at to basically self-finance. We need to bring in the amount of money that we know is going to be going out, and we'll be looking at what the, those numbers are. But before we can design rates, we really need to have a rational plan where we take a look at your current operating expenses, what we know you owe from past capital expenses, that's existing debt service, and then layering onto that what we expect to be the cash flow associated with the capital projects that need to be done. And that can be a collection of either cash finance capital, but by and large in Bridgewater, that's going to be new debt that's going to need to be taken on, and so the debt service obligation will need to be paid and the revenue raised to do that. Now, when we talk about debt service obligation and taking on debt versus capital, just to frame the idea a little bit, because there, there's many folks who think we should pay for everything with capital. From a financial standpoint, if you say to me, you know, we have a million-dollar project that we need to get it done, and I, and we'd like to cash finance it. If you cash finance it, of course, you need to re, raise a million dollars in that fiscal cycle to have it on hand to pay for the contract. If you debt finance. If you debt finance it through one of the state vehicles, really what that million dollars turns into is about sixty-two thousand dollars a year in future costs. It's similar, you know, the corollary is a home mortgage. You don't pay for the whole house upfront, you basically, you pay in a monthly installment, in this case, it's a bi-annual installment, back to the state. So, that's really the first two steps. The second two steps are talking about rate designing, how do we want the rates to raise the revenue for doing that? We basically go through historical consumption, we take a look at how you've raised your revenues in the past, what the metrics that the town bills, or pardon me, what Bridgewater bills. You know, when they, you know, the number of gallons, or in your case, the hundred cubic feet, the CCF that's on the bill that you actually assign a charge to, we take a look at that and do a statistical breakdown of, we did five years in this case, just to try and make sure we understood what the variability was in each of the years. And then, we also take a look at, you know, as we look at variable rates, we take a look at the customer impact, and we will look at some of those things. And then, really, the final step is the rate adoption, and that's what we're doing tonight. We're talking about it in the public forum, taking a look at what the numbers are, and hopefully getting to a resolution that will give Bridgewater the rates you're going to need in order to be able to break even on your water and sewer enterprise funds. So, the background and drivers, this is the number one on the previous slide, this is, as I indicated right up front in the opening thoughts, you're entering into very large capital programs in comparison to your overall revenue streams and historical costs. Obviously, Bridgewater wants to be able to maintain the fiscal sustainability of both enterprise funds, and just to give you an idea of what those costs are going to be on the water side, the big regulatory change that's come about in the last twelve months, in truth, was the final adoption of the PFAS regulations at a level that is very stringent, you might say, and the costs associated with that are going to be substantial in order to treat the water. There's gonna be, need to be new treatment processes and structures that are built in order to do that, as well as source development, which we talked about, in order to be able to accommodate future growth. All of those things add into, of course, the fact that Bridgewater has an aging water system, and all water systems need, you know, not huge, usually not huge one-time expenditures, but you need to, as you do with home repair, you need to peck away at the problems and make sure that you're taking care of things so that smaller issues don't become big, and that's included in both plans. So, on the sewer side, as I'm sure the council knows, you have a new NIPD's permit, that is the permit by which you're allowed to discharge treated water back into the waters of the state of Massachusetts. It's going to require a very substantial upgrade at the plant, nine figures by the time it probably gets constructed, just so we're all on the same page. And then, to add to that, there are valid concerns, I think, about the current system's ability to allow the town to accommodate future growth, which we believe is coming, and we wanna make sure you're in a position to be able to handle it. Okay, so, the rational, or the financial plan is basically, it's a rational method where we pull together the costs of operating a utility. And as I indicated first off, it's operational costs, that's your salaries, your expenses, and your indirect costs. It's existing debt service, that's past borrowing, the notes that have already been taken out, and then, onto that, the big one in this case, is gonna be the capital investments, and that's really the capital investments to accommodate both compliance as well as future growth. You add those three basically big cost categories together, and you end up, combined with Bridgewater's policies and preferences for the maintenance of reserves and other prudent operational activities, you end up with basically an annual revenue requirement that flows out of that. This is the identification of how much money are we gonna be targeting the rates to raise. So, when we do that, all of this built into a financial model which Bridgewater will have once we finalize the process, but the recommendations are not going to change. The cost components, the O and M costs, that's based on current historical budgets, the enterprise fund debt service, those are, you know, that's debt that has already been taken on, we have a repayment schedule that's built directly in. The capital improvements that are included, we are basically taking the current construction cost estimates that Bridgewater has already seen, and we escalate them into the year when we expect them to be constructed. So, for example, if we have a project that you're consulting engineers that is gonna be ten million dollars, but we aren't gonna build it until 2035, we've escalated those costs to account for future inflation because we want the model to actually reflect what we expect will be the true picture when these things get built. And then, for capital financing, as I said, we've taken a look at a small amount of cash financing, that's mostly for some of the vehicles and smaller one-off purchases, combined with general obligation bonds, which the state revolving fund is a form of general obligation bond, and we have used SRF funding with twenty-year repayments for basically all of the notes. So, taking a look at the capital program, because this is where the rubber's gonna meet the road in our discussion as we get to the charts a little bit later. You have about fifty-one and a half million dollars on the water side in fiscal twenty-five dollars for the next five years. Beyond that, you have about sixty-five and a half million dollars in current dollars. These will all be more by the time we get to twenty, the 2030 to 2034. That sixty-five million is gonna go up by inflation between now and 2030 and 2034, and so eventually, you're gonna end up spending more of that, we account for that. And then, when you add it all up, we have around twelve and a half million dollars in annual spending that we're gonna need to be doing on compliance for the next five years. That money's gonna need to come from somewhere, and we'll be showing you what the financials look like. Similarly, on the sewer side, we have very large projects associated with the plant upgrades. You have around sixty-six million dollars in current dollars in the next five years, another thirty-three million dollars in the following five years, so all in, as I alluded to earlier, about nine figures of spending on the wastewater side as well over the course of the next ten years, so. So, what does that end up giving us? Now, what you'll see in these charts, these are basically stack bar format by fiscal cycle, growing from the bottom in the stack bars, we have water on the left and sewer on the right. Growing from the bottom, we have basically operating expenses in dark green. We have a little bit of pay-go, which is basically cash financed capital in the cyan color. We have your existing debt service, meaning debt that's already been bonded, and you have a repayment schedule that's gonna need to be paid in each of the fiscal cycles at these levels, that's shown in pink. And then, what you'll see, the big bars at the top are the red, that is your future debt service. Those are the future payments on loans that are gonna be taken associated with the capital program we just took a look at. And so, what does that look like? On both charts, on the left-hand side, the call-out box, it is important to note you have relatively flat expectations for your operations and maintenance expenses. The major budgetary impacts that we're gonna need and that we're designing the rates to allow you to address are gonna be the capital spending that is required by regulatory bodies that you have to comply with in order to maintain compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act and in order to meet compliance requirements of your NIPD's permit, which is the discharge permit at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the important one, you'll notice pretty much all of the growth is due to capital, and it is all regulatorily required. So, now, very similar-looking sheet, only water this time. On the left-hand side, we have a very similar chart to last, not very similar, it's the exact same chart as last time with a single line laid over in cyan, and that is our revenue target, what we want the revenues to do in order to be able to have a reasonably predictable and successful overall utility operations for the enterprise fund. On the right-hand side, what you have is a projection of what we think your year-end water fund balance is gonna be, that is retained earnings, as they're collectively known on the town side, they'd be called free cash. It's basically what you have in additional cash at the end of each fiscal cycle, and you can see, we do build a little bit in the near years, and we spend some of the accrued additional capital over the course of the last five years of this longer-term projection. My expectation would be, you know, a ten-year projection is by definition a little speculative, and so while we bracketed everything as we think it's going to occur, there are things that we know we can't see, the changes in development plans and things along those lines are likely to make changes to this, and that's part of the reason that we give Bridgewater the model. You'll be able to make the model change in real time as you move forward over the course of the next three, four, or five years and see what, if any changes are needed to the recommendations that we'll be looking at. But, this is what I would say is a responsible picture, or at least a plan for your overall revenue picture. And what, you know, the important thing is we are targeting an annual increase of ten percent in overall revenues. So, next year, we're ten percent higher, the year after that, we're another ten percent higher. So, because what you'll notice, the important thing to recognize here is right now, your water rates generate a little over five million dollars. By fiscal thirty-four, with the capital plan that we're talking about, we're going to need your overall water revenues to be somewhere in the fourteen to fifteen million dollar range. And with the capital plans that are expected based on the regulatory rules that are now in force, it's difficult to see a way that you're gonna be able to evade that future capital requirements, so.
Got a question on that?
Of course.
So, based on that projection, so are you anticipating that rates need to go up about ten percent per year to get to that number?
So, they're right now within the model, so within the, this is again, back to the point I made about how we give you the model. I do not, and I would recommend that no, none of my clients make their rates predicated upon an assumption of growth. Indeed, you will have growth based on everything I've seen, and so, what we're showing is based on a static, a static water and sewer average sales over the course of the past couple of years. In all likelihood, the rates that you're gonna be able to see in years five and later are likely to be a little bit lower due to growth in your overall customer base, but indeed, the revenue number is unlikely to change significantly. So, if you, in the next five years, grow your revenue base and your volumetric sales by three to four percent over that five-year period, indeed, the rates that we show at the end of the presentation will be able to be slightly lower while still breaking even, but the revenue number is not going to change, and that's because of the amount of borrowing that's going to be done associated with your capital programs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, on sewer, it is a little more comparative to increase revenues fairly quickly, and again, this is because of the sixty-six million dollars that we're gonna be spending at the wastewater treatment plant, and the fact that right now, you have reserves in this enterprise fund of only about one to two million dollars. One to two million dollars is absolutely insufficient reserves, maybe not absolutely insufficient, it is a very low level of reserves going into a capital program of that size. And so, what we're doing on the sewer side, exact same set of charts, we're recommending at least for the first seven years, you're looking at a twenty percent annual increase, you'll see it tails off after that time. But the goal here, again, is to keep on the right-hand chart to make sure we do not project ever falling into a negative net fund balance, because in Massachusetts, the DOR, when you do your tax recap and you do your annual filings, they don't like that, and they will come and, I don't wanna speak for them. It's generally speaking, it's not something that communities like to have happen, because in the end, by my professional understanding, the state considers everything all sort of, whether it's enterprise fund or not, in the end, it's the town's responsibility, and so the town or the state DOR, as you're doing your annual reporting, when you get to set your mill rate, you know, if you aren't gonna raise the revenues through your rates, they're gonna wanna see them raised somewhere else, because it's a real obligation of the town. So, it's something that, to a client, every client in Massachusetts I've ever worked with has not wanted to see their fund balance go negative at the end of a fiscal cycle. What you'll see here is we get very close, seven years out. We didn't wanna go negative in our projections, but the simple reason there is we recognize that these are very large annual increases that we need in order to be able to fund this debt service. So, you'll see in the first four to five years, we're gonna build a little bit of excess reserves, and then it was intentional, the goal of spending some of those excess reserves in two parts, number one, to keep us from having to go above a twenty percent annual increase in order to make sure we stay that high, but then, the secondary piece is, to your point, counselor, you're likely to have some growth. And so, it doesn't, I think, do anyone justice in order to come in and show a worst-case scenario, if that's not a realistic scenario. And we feel like this is a good middle-of-the-road projection and became the basis of the recommendations that we make.
Yeah, with that, so obviously, yeah, less people are tied into our sewer, you know, versus everyone's tied into water.
That's correct.
So, are we projecting to try and get more people to tie into our sewer as well in this projection over this timeframe?
So, well, right now, we are projecting basically the existing user base with the rates.
Just the existing.
Right. Which, remember, I believe later tonight, and I did not draft the orders, but I believe we're hopefully gonna be moving forward with at least the fiscal twenty-six rates. You know, with the model, this will be easily revisable if you do see significant growth and we see large new customers come in who are rate-paying customers, and we can depend on a revenue from them. Indeed, because with an enterprise fund, you're not trying to break a profit, if we raise a dollar or a thousand dollars from a new customer, that's a thousand dollars we don't need to raise from the remainder of the customer base.
Correct.
But it is a dollar that needs to be raised.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Of course.
Just to clarify, so you're projecting that we should raise the water ten percent annually for each customer?
Right now, we're just, we're purely talking about the overall revenue requirement of the rate structure.
Right, so to hit that revenue, we would have to raise ten percent?
The amount of overall revenue you're going to raise in the enterprise fund for water is gonna go up by ten percent per year in order to be able to break even on these utilities?
So, each resident's water bill will go up ten percent? I just wanna keep it so.
Not necessarily.
So, how is that?
You'll see, because we're recommending some changes to the rate structure, to, less so, on the water side, we are recommending a couple of changes to.
Yeah, you're raising the prices. I checked the chart.
Yep.
So, in this one with the sewer, so just the residents that on the sewer.
Yes.
They'll be raised twenty percent each year, so you can hit that.
So, we are gonna be recommending, and as part of the package that you receive for the rates for next year, we're recommending changes that prevent that from needing to happen by fixing a couple of inequities in your system right now.
By bringing everyone's.
Talk about what those are and why we're changing them.
Everyone's bill up.
What's that?
You're making everyone, you know, like, I saw that, yeah, okay, so it is kind of.
Let me get to the one part on the sewer, and I think it will become evident.
Mr. Perry.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, back to just sort of the high-level discussion, we wanna fully cover the operating costs and ensure the long-term adequacy of supplies and capacity for both utilities. We want the rates based on actual historical billing data and the maintenance of the existing basic three-tier volumetric rate block. We wanna align the rates with community goals, and by that, what we mean is make sure that there aren't built-in inequities in the existing rate structure, we're gonna talk about that in a minute. We're gonna be talking about equitability between rate payers based upon the demands they place on the shared assets and how we're gonna recommend some changes for that. And then, again, back to the charts and how we don't want reserves to be, to go negative, we wanna maintain at least a minimum reserve balances necessary for just long-term prudent financial management, so. Okay, so, on to the overall Bridgewater customer base. This is an actual statistical breakdown, I won't get into it too much, but on the water side, you have around eight thousand users, as you alluded to, counselor, on the sewer side, you have many fewer. The chart on the right basically breaks down on a percentage basis, the number of bills in the blue bars. on a percentage basis. The number of bills in the blue bars as a percentage of overall bills that are issued at or below the level that is on the x-axis of the chart. So if you have a 20 on the x-axis and you follow the blue bar up, go across, it'll say something like 80% or 75%. 75% of the bills are issued at or below that level. Okay. So this is us doing a breakdown of your actual billing data. And then the red line is how much of the overall water sales are at or below that level. And so it just, it allows us to make a very good prediction of the revenue generation capacity of any set of rates having it this way and knowing what the rate structure is. So taking a look at just a touch of background on customers, as I alluded to, and, and just so you know, these bills do include the fixed charges. But you have three tiers on both water and sewer. They're slightly different. In your first tier, it's 0 to 1,500 cubic feet. 55% of bills are issued only with water only in tier one. The average usage of a customer who in that class is only 9.2 CCF per quarter. That's not very much water. And the average water bill is only about $60 per quarter. Similarly, in, in the second tier for users that fall between that 1,501 and 10,000 cubic feet per quarter, almost all of the rest fall into that tier. The average use for those customers is about 25 and 1/2 CCF per bill and their average quarterly water bill is $165. And then on third tier, you have a very small number of, of users, but quite a lot of sales, quite a lot of, about 10% of your volume is up there, even though a very small number of the overall bills are about 10% of the water you sell is in this tier. And the average water bill for those customers is around $3,000 a quarter. So similarly, the chart, I don't want to belabor this, the chart on the bottom works exactly the same way, based on the exact same tier setup. Again, the vast, or not vast majority, but the preponderance of customers on the sewer system are in the first tier. Most of the remainder are in the second tier. And in the sewer, because indeed you have a higher density in the area and some larger users, a higher percentage of the bills actually end up in tier three in sewer, both combined with the, the, the nature of the customers who are served, but also your tiers are smaller in sewer as well. So just make a note of that. But we aren't recommending changing any of the tiers. The second tier in sewer only goes from 1,501 to 3,000 cubic feet, as opposed to on water, it goes all the way up to 10,000. So, okay. So when we're talking about designing rates, there's really a couple of basic levers I just want to touch because these interplay when we're setting rates. So on the right or on the left-hand side, when we talk about setting up higher fixed charges, on the positive side, it increases revenue stability. And that's a very good thing when you're going into a capital program. We have the, what we presented tonight does do that. It does have a greater impact on the smallest of users. The flip side of that coin is for people who, you know, there is a subset of users in almost all New England communities where people go away for four or five months every year. The town of Bridgewater and all of the other users indeed continue to pay for water while they're gone. And so by, by having very low fixed charges, in a way, you do have most of the users, in, in a way, subsidizing the maintenance of the system that serves people who are here maybe six, eight months a year. So there are some benefits, both from a revenue stability as well as making sure that everyone's contributing equitably. A more steeply inclined rate block structure is something we did look at. And, and when we say more steeply inclined, you can do that two ways. You can either shrink your tiers and push more of the water into the top tier, or you can just make the top tier more expensive. Now, your tiers for a Massachusetts community are actually pretty steeply inclined. One of the dangers of very steeply inclined rate block structures is if you force people to stop watering their lawns, that's a good thing environmentally, but usually it's not a good thing for the economics of an enterprise fund. I, I can think of communities in the Commonwealth who have institutional, large institutional customers who water things like playing fields, who see a very definite revenue challenge. Every year, we get a rainy summer. It's because they have really expensive water in their top tier and people turn off the, the large yard or the large field irrigation. And it's, it creates a real revenue instability. And so we aren't going to recommend, we know what the, we know what the usage characteristics are with your existing rate block structure. And so we've decided to stay with the basic constraints of that. And then the final one is adoption of sewer connection-sized linked fixed charges. This is, we're going to get into that in the next slide. But basically, right now, the important thing to, to note is when you talk about the fixed charges on the sewer side, right now, a 1,200-square-foot house is paying the exact same as a 50-unit condo development or a 200-unit dorm, if there are any that are quite that large. On, on a quarterly basis, the fixed charge is exactly the same. And that's not the way any other utility works, including your, including your water utility. Your water utility uses industry standards. And so that's basically the three changes that we really took a look at. The one that we're going to hit hard next is simply the, the third one, which is getting the sewer fixed charge in alignment with industry standards. So on the top table, you can see what, what your basic multipliers are on sizes for water and sewer. And then next to that is what's known as the AWWA standard. That's the American Water Works Association. Those are size-based capacity factors. These are standard factors for setting fixed charges across the industry. You'll see that on the water side, you actually have capacity factors that are very closely aligned with the AWWA. On the sewer side, you will see the impact of, or you'll see what I just told you. No matter how large your water connection, you could be putting, you could have a connection that's putting 5,000 gallons a minute into the sewer, you're paying the exact same fixed charge on a quarterly basis as a person who's running, you know, running the dishwasher and flushing their toilet. It, it is a substantial, what I would consider to be inequity. This is, and just to reiterate sort of one of the points, you're not alone. We fixed this exact same issue in another community here in Plymouth County, actually, within the last year. So these are, these are sort of things that people set up rate structures when these utilities came, came to life. They didn't under, you know, a lot of times, these were new and people didn't understand it. But now that we have identified it, let's fix it. And you'll see that that's actually a beneficial impact for most users within the system. When I say the most, I mean the vast majority. And so what we would recommend is, on the bottom table, going to a set of connection-sized fixed charge factors that are in alignment, both water and sewer, with industry standards. And in addition to which, not, not just getting it right for a size factor, as many other communities in the Commonwealth do, Bridgewater would like to pursue getting a, a customer class-based designation between the two. And so you have a residential charge, and then you have a premium charge for folks who are not residential customers. And the two of those play into, into the recommendations. Leads to a slightly more complex set of fixed charges, but one that's far more equitable than the existing set. Are there any questions there? I could jabber on for hours. It's a problem. But I, I'm happy if I have not explained something, clear way to go back and revisit.
I, I actually have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Who are non-residential? Are they people who rent out their homes or apartment building owners?
Uh, no, they, they are, they're commercial customers. They're the, the institutional customers, Bridgewater State being, I think, the largest one in town.
So would that consider our small businesses still?
It, it would, and the, these changes in fixed charges would include commercial accounts, yes.
So it doesn't matter the size of the commercial, as long as they're just commercial, their rates will go up?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But i- if, if they, they'll also, you know, if you have a large commercial account, I, I would proffer the position that for the first time in a long time, you'll actually be paying your fair share. Because for a long time, by having the completely flat between the 1,200-square-foot Cape Cod house and the 6,000-square-foot commercial building that's running 3,000 gallons of water a day into the sewer, they've been paying the exact same fixed charge literally for decades. And so I would say what we're trying to do and what we're recommending isn't just, you know, making changes willingly. We're trying to actually set these fixed charges based upon the expected usage of the shared resource, based on the size of their connection. Okay. So that being said, here are the, the tables. Again, I apologize especially for the small print. But at the top, we have the rates, what they would be if you don't make any of the changes to the fixed charge policies versus what they would be and what we're proposing in the bottom table that looks similar. But we have the additional fixed charge classification for non-residential users. So again, back to the financial plan, both of these rate structures will generate an additional 10% annually above the prior year's revenue expectation. You currently, within your fixed charge, you raise about 82% to 83% of your revenues through volumetric charges and only about 18% through fixed charges. We're going to recommend increasing that 8% up to about 30, up to exactly 30% and resetting the fixed charges commensurate with that. And again, this gets back to the, the net benefit going into a large capital investment period of having a more stable revenue stream. So there's that. And then we're also talking about instituting the non-residential fixed charges that are at a premium to the residential charges regardless of size. And that's a percentage change. So what you will note between the top and the bottom tables, because in the bottom table, we raised more revenue from fixed charges, you will note that the volumetric, the three lines on the bottom of each of the tables, the volumetric rates on the bottom table are lower. And again, this gets back to the question of when we're talking about designing a revenue, a suite of revenue generating options, if we are raising more revenue from the fixed charges, as I just said, we were intending to, we don't need to raise as much revenue from the volumetric charges. And so while indeed, we will see fixed charges go up, volumetric, volumetric charges will come down. This is on the water side only. There's a somewhat different picture on the sewer. So.
Can I ask a question on that?
Of course.
So you had mentioned that you didn't factor in new growth in this, in these numbers either, right? So if Bridgewater had a boom of housing over the next five years, that would also play into some of this that could help alleviate or change those structural costs?
It certainly would. Because again, we don't expect the overall revenue need to, to change super substantially. If you bring in 3,000 more connected homes into a system of 8,000, by definition, all of these are dropping by a similar factor. You know, they're, they're dropping proportionally to the increase in, in overall customers who are paying a fixed charge and the overall volumetric usage. Now, there is going to be some capital that's going to be required in order to get to that point. And that's why we haven't built it in, is making multi-year rate projections based upon the assumption of an uncertain outcome is usually not a very good practice.
Sure.
So we've avoided that.
Sure. But so, just, I guess in summary to that.
Yes.
A lot of folks look at this at very surface level and say, you know, we have significant capital challenges ahead of us.
Yes.
Let's not add any more to the, to the capacity until we address that challenge. But what you're kind of conveying is if you add more to that system, you take in more revenue, which could then lead to decreased rates for already existing customers as well.
So the, the important thing to remember is there are some growth-related capital projects within the overall CIP. And I can, I can scroll to the CIPs at the end of the presentation if you'd like. But a substantial portion, as I said, of the CIPs definitely on the sewer side, but also on the water side, is related to compliance spending. It has to happen if you don't add another single customer to the system above and beyond what's there right now. As a matter of fact, it has to happen if you lose, if, if, you know, a subset of customers says, oh, we're plugging into the Brockton Water System. I don't think that's possible. But, you know, if you were to lose customers, the revenue number does not change because the capital spending needs to occur. And so we don't make the assumption that we're going to lose usage, although I, I will say this, one of the reasons we did not want to go more steeply inclined on the rate block structures is the last thing we, you know, last thing we want from a financial perspective is for some of the large irrigators to, you know, to drill wells, quite frankly. That's a bad outcome. But, but no. So we are not planning on growth in this, but we are giving you a model that allows you to count for two, three years down the road if you've seen 3% or 4% customer count growth and 3% or 4% in growth of the amount of water you're selling to adjust the rates that are shown on this table quite easily and quickly.
Right. So one more question, and maybe it's, maybe you're going to address this at some point. But the regulations that are being kind of implemented, what seems like at an incredible pace over the last decade especially, right?
Yes.
Are far outpacing towns' abilities to keep up with those regulations. So at some point, it's going to come to an head because Bridgewater isn't unique in that, in that the town can't afford to keep up with what's being asked in the regulations. So you're proposing how we get there and how we meet those regulations, but there has to be some reality to the fact that not everybody's going to afford to be able to get there, right?
So the Safe Drinking Water Act is pretty unequivocal.
Yep.
You can be assessed a, you know, a enforcement order by the federal government that says you will spend this. I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
And there really is no recourse. And so when, you know, when we're talking about compliance spending under the Safe Drinking Water Act and the Clean Water Act, if the town, you know, I, I've seen cities, especially on the clean water side, delay long enough that they do end up in federal court with large fines and everything else that comes along with it. And so delaying is a strategy. It was usually a strategy that's more amenable to people who have very, very large coffers to fund lawyers because that's what you're going to be spending a lot of money on. So, so we are making the assumption that you do install the compliance-related spending in compliance with the federal regulations that oversee these utilities. That assumption is baked into this model.
Yeah. As they sit now, currently, the regulations.
Right.
Which again, will, I mean, best guess, will change between now and 2030. Again, right? I mean...
So the, I guess the only thing I can tell you, on the water side, so the, the PFAS rule that was just issued last year is by far the most expensive compliance rule that has ever been issued.
Right.
By the EPA, when you look at the overall cash spend for municipalities, anyway. I don't know, I, I make no predictions about future regulatory appetite for additional changes. But I, I think you're not the only community going through this. I can think of another community here in Plymouth County who saw their revenue, their, their rate revenue requirement over 10 years go from about 3.2 million to north of 18 million. They had a lot of small sources and each one needs a treatment plant. And there, there's at least regulatory-wise, there's no way around it. As, as far as I understand it, you may find someone who thinks there is. But by my understanding, the Safe Drinking Water Act, now that the rule has been issued in draft form, had the comment period, and was fully promulgated late last fall, I believe the EPA is, within the last month, issued a delayed compliance schedule. Quite frankly, I think it makes a lot of sense, not because I'm a fan of having some of these chemicals in water, but the fact of the matter is with how many systems need the new, I mean, I say, with how many water distribution systems need to have these treatment systems built. We don't have the construction capacity, quite frankly, in this country to build them within a three-year period. And so we have seen a, we've seen a shift in the compliance schedule, but we've maintained the compliance schedule that was expected and presented to this council by the, by the city engineers. So, pardon me, the town engineers.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions. Thank you. So first, great questions by Counselor Murphy. I think those are definitely top questions that we're going to get asked about this and have been asked. So just to sort of sum that up, in some ways, our hands are kind of tied on where we're going to be based on the regulations. So we're going to need to spend that money and find that money. And pretty much the only way we're going to do that is through rate increases. And that is kind of not an option for us going down the road.
Quite frankly, these, these rules aren't an option for any community that, that has them, put, put on them.
Sure. And to kind of build off that regulation question, typically what we see is not deregulation in these areas. It's an increase in regulation. So I don't, I think it would be a fair assumption to assume that we may see more... So I don't, I think it would be a fair assumption to assume that we may see more regulations in 10 years than less regulations. So at a minimum, we're going to be where we're at now.
I would expect so, yes.
Sure. In the same, in line with the residential buildings that Councilor Murphy mentioned, would it also benefit the town to increase businesses that are using water on the four-inch lines to increase revenue?
Absolutely.
And that would be a net benefit just based on the cost? It might not be a net benefit based on water usage at the cap, but based on the cost of the water going into the system that alleviates the increases on the citizens?
So the basic economics of all utilities are basically, the only expensive drop is the first one you pump, right? You have to build the treatment plant to make the water compliant with the regulations. The first, in order to be able to pump out the first clean drop, that's where all the money is. So if you can sell more water to more customers, generally speaking, that is a highly desirable outcome for any community. The financial challenges associated with demand shrinkage are much more difficult to manage than for communities having to go through, through some form of growth as Bridgewater is looking at. But yes, to answer your question directly, as long as the supply is there and of reasonable cost, it behooves the entire community in order to have more customers and sell more water.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask one question?
Of course.
Mr. Kennedy, you were saying that we should change, that they should change the size of the meter on homes?
No, I'm not changing the, not the size of meter in homes. My question was more based around if we had other businesses on, say, a four-inch as opposed to a two, you would then get a higher revenue stream from those businesses and the cost benefit for the average citizen, they would pay less percentage in their water bill.
But can we do that? I mean, isn't each size, it's for the pressure to come through? So if you put the wrong size on, then the pressure won't flow evenly, and that's why everyone has different sizes?
So, if you don't mind me interjecting here. So generally speaking, the size of the connection is determined by the usage of, the internal usage of the, pardon me, the building that's being served in combination with, you know, for example, you can have a building, let's say, a dill pickle factling, a pickling factory. I've seen this occur. The building itself needed probably a two-inch meter, but they had a four-inch meter going into the building because they use so much water. So the size of the meter is very rarely, you're not going to go out, put in a four-inch meter and immediately sell more water. The point is more that the more larger customers you get, especially with a steeply inclining rate block structure, the lower the increases on the lower users are going to be.
Sure, and just to, I'm not implying we change meter sizes on businesses or customers. I'm just simply asking if we have more that require that amount of money and they have those large meters already, the benefit is there if we were to bring in more businesses that may use that larger meter. It wasn't to imply we should be changing, I don't think we should be changing anyone's, especially the residential's meters, that that would not be what we need to do.
Okay, I know I'm getting really long in the tooth here, so I'm going to race through this one. This is basically very similar to, very similar to the prior. We have the current rate structure and the set of bars, and it's a stacked bar format of average, average cost under the existing rate structure without the proposed changes versus the recommendations that we're making at the bottom. And this is on the water side. Now, I'm going to switch over to sewer because this is where a little bit more complexity is occurring because we're making two changes. So on the sewer side, currently, we are recommending rates, the rates on both of these tables generate about, an annual increase of about 20% per year in the overall revenue generation of the rates. Right now, your current rate structure generates around 19, a little over 19% of your overall sewer revenue off of fixed charges. We're recommending that we switch the fixed charges up to generate 25% of the fixed revenue again, or of the overall revenue, again, to stabilize revenue and going into a very large capital program. And then we institute both the size-based fixed charges that we've talked about, and you'll notice they are going to be very different between these two charts, the fixed charges. The benefit is because, again, the overall revenue requirement is only going from about 19 to 25% of overall revenue coming from the fixed charges, because we are now appropriately setting charges for the largest of users, you'll notice the new fixed charge on the sewer for the average residential user is going down, as are the rates compared to the two options. So on the sewer side, for the average residential user, your fixed charge is going down because we're appropriately charging larger fixed charges to the largest customers, and because we're generating more revenue from fixed charges, the sewer rates are also going to be, meaning the volumetric rates are also going to be a little bit lower than if you kept your existing rate structure. So there's two things that are interplaying there. Both of these rate tables generate the same amount of revenue off of your existing customer base.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Sure.
Our DPW fellow named Jonas said that we are not generating enough water for our wells and that they are not recharging quick enough. Okay, so we may have a problem with our supply of water. What would you propose we do? This is all very well with the fixed charges, but if we, that implies almost an infinite set of water, and we don't.
Yep.
And so what do you propose to do about that? And my second question is, if we need to upgrade the wells that we have now because they have problems or possibly dig a new well, would it be possible to get capital from BSU as an investment in potentially upgrading our current wells, which have, 10A and 10B have problems, or potentially digging a new well, perhaps on Vernon Street where it had been dug earlier?
So I'm not the city, I'm not the town engineer, but I believe from our review and inclusion of the capital program, you have both annuals, fairly, a fairly robust program of annual well maintenance on your existing resources, as well as money in the capital program for new source development, whatever that may be. I know there's a number of options that are, that are under consideration. We're carrying an appropriate level of funding to make sure you can develop new source in the future within these rates.
We would be able to develop, let's say, upgrade those wells or dig a new well with these increased rates? We would get sufficient capital?
You have, within the capital program that we are accounting for, because I'm not going to be able to give you advice on what you should do with your water sources right now and whether you could maximize them in some way. You know, our charge here is to make sure that we are appropriately planning the capital based upon Bridgewater's engineers' recommendations, and then making sure that you're actually going to have a revenue stream to pay for that capital when it occurs. So indeed, I know there is a little bit of a chicken and egg issue whenever you're getting towards the upper end of a supply capacity. We're going to talk about that in some of the closing thoughts as to some ideas you could, you could consider there. Right now, those, you know, some of the things like increasing connection charges and having capacity buy-in charges, which are things that are common in the Commonwealth increasingly because you're not the only community facing these issues. They're something that Bridgewater may want to consider, and we can talk a little bit about that, I guess, further on. But I just want to hit one highlight here, and this is the combined, so we've gone through all the charts, this is slide 21 of the slide decks you have. The call-out is both of the rate, the average bill calculations that are in these stacked bars will generate the exact same amount of revenue. They generate it slightly differently, larger users don't pay, or larger connections don't pay as much in the, in the top one and, and in the bottom one, smaller users, especially due to the sewer issue, still do. But in joint, if you make all of the changes in aggregate that we're recommending, your average residential user in Bridgewater is going to have about a 7% lower bill in fiscal '26 if you make these changes, and that will perpetuate into the future than if you maintain your existing rate structure and just adjust it for the amount of revenue you need to raise. Now, that's the impact of changing the fixed charges primarily, so. Okay, so final thoughts, hit the nail on the head a bunch of times. You're going to be spending a lot of money on these utilities. This plan will, the rates that we've offered will, in all, you know, to the best of your predictive capacity and for the future, and based upon your historical demands, they will pay for everything you need to do within your capital program and pay for operations. I would say, to your point, Counselor, something that would be appropriate, and I can't speak to anything that Bridgewater may be able to negotiate with any of the customers in the way of a pilot or something along those lines for existing customers as far as new source development, but many other communities, including some in Plymouth, have recently up, or in Plymouth County have recently updated connection charges to help deal with this. You know, when you're looking at, you know, substantially increasing the number of customers, there's two different ways of looking at it for systems that have a surfeit of capacity, they have what's known as a buy-in, you would, that isn't really the situation you're in. But there is something also called an incremental charge methodology that you could apply to new users, you know, if it's going to cost us X number of dollars to bring an additional million gallon per day of water source online and connect it to the system, you know, how do you allot that so that it doesn't end up in your existing customers' bills? How do the people who are the beneficiaries of the growth end up making sure that they are contributing resources commensurate to the costs being incurred by the community? And connection charges can do that for you. So I would recommend you at least consider taking a look at that. On the right-hand side, again, the colors really fade out on the large screen, but the existing rates that we've shown you, and I think that are definitely appropriate and in line with industry standards, they pay for all of the new and evolving regulatory requirements and the big changes that we've seen in the cost of constructing anything in the last five years and into the future. On the bottom hand, with the growth-related expenses, accommodation of new development due to statement, and housing requirements, and ensuring that equitable or equitability relationship where you don't have people who've lived and bought water here in Bridgewater for 30 years paying for the capital that's going to let a new 10-house development go in right down the street from them, making sure that you don't have one class of, you know, long-term customers subsidizing the capital of newer customers. I would recommend that you take a strong look at updating your connection charges to reflect the actual costs that Bridgewater is going to incur. Now, the one thing I can tell you is because a rate study is different from a connection, really the connection, connection charge analysis, if, for example, with the build-out that you end up seeing, if you end up shifting the new source development costs that are in your CIP onto actual new customer connections through the use of connection charges, and we did this in Middleborough actually, less than a year and a half ago, the capital that would have been paid by rates in this rate study, you know, let's say the million-dollar new source, if it's being paid for by, you know, 100 new homes coming online on a pro-rata share, and you have a justification for charging that, that money doesn't have to be paid for out of rates anymore. Again, this comes back to the question of, it's very difficult to give you what I think are a defensible projection of rates if we start making a lot of assumptions, but I would recommend Bridgewater take a strong look at connection charges because you're in a position where you need new supply, and that is a very, very distinctive, separate cost from the costs of regulatory compliance on your existing assets. And making sure that the long-term customer isn't fronting the bill to make sure that, you know, every developer south of Boston can build as many homes as he wants to in Bridgewater. So, so that being said, I am happy to take questions for as long as anyone would like to ask. I think we're good.
I do have one question. When you had the sewer here, the measure, it says the 5/8 measure residence and then the 1-inch resident. What's the 1-inch resident different from the 5/8? Is the 5/8 a home and the 1-inch resident apartment building?
Generally speaking, what you'll notice in, in the rate structures that we're recommending is the 5/8s and the 3/4s are the same, and that's a very intentionally done. And that's because, not just here in Bridgewater, but in almost all Massachusetts communities, oftentimes, if a new home gets built or a meter breaks and they, they don't have a 5/8 inch meter ready to go, they've run out of them, they'll put a 3/4 inch onto a, onto a 5/8 inch connection.
That's just going over costs.
And so it's, the reason we keep those the same is even though the 3/4 inch meter has a higher capacity than the 5/8 inch, there's a lot of 3/4 inch meters in the Commonwealth that are placed on normal residential connections, and we don't want to be hitting single-family residences who by no fault of their own ended up with a 3/4 inch meter.
So what's a 1-inch resident?
I'm sorry?
You have a 1-inch resident.
Yeah, well, 1-inch residential would be a multifamily unit that places a higher demand on the system. So the, again, sort of the guiding principle under the SI or the differential cost of the fixed charges is we want fixed charges to be higher for people who place the largest demands on your system. And, you know, a really easy example, although most people don't understand the way electric fixed charges work for large users, but they have a thing called a demand charge for industrial users, which is the highest, or the higher the peak demand that you put instantaneously on the system, the much higher bill you get. And so the smallest user is just, you know, turning on the air.
I just wasn't sure if you're going by bedrooms in homes or what, but I just.
We don't go by bedrooms. We go by the thing that we actually have a metric on, which is what's in the billing system, which is meter size. That's the, that's the, you know, we have to measure what the apples we have, so to speak, so.
All right, thank you.
Just a very basic question, maybe.
Sure.
For my education. Does the water, does water have to be an enterprise fund by law? If not, are there towns or cities that operate without having an enterprise fund? And I ask because you mentioned that the idea is that it's a sustainable fund, revenue comes in, expenses go out. It's not sustainable right now, which is why I'm asking. Hopefully, this work gets us there, but I'm just curious about that enterprise piece.
So, yes, yeah, communities are allowed to have water, water and sewer utilities on the general fund, and many do more, it's more common today in Massachusetts to have the sewer utility on the general fund than it is to have the water utility. Water utilities in the form of enterprise funds are, I would say, the standard. But this sort of the rule, as I understand it as a non-lawyer, is the general fund is always allowed to subsidize an enterprise fund, but not the reverse. So you can't, you know, you can't spend a million dollars providing water to everybody, charge them three, and then knock a portion off the, off the property tax bill in the, in the city or the community. That's, that is sort of the one-way barrier. So any community is allowed to subsidize from general revenues enterprise fund operations, but not vice versa. So there, you certainly are allowed to run it on the general fund should you want. I wouldn't recommend it, but.
Any other questions from Counselors?
So what are we going to do about needing more capacity? Do you have any ideas?
That is a question for Bridgewater's engineers. I believe, I've heard a number of them during our discussions as we were looking at the capital program. A number of them discussed, but I quite frankly, am not the one to know which are the most likely or which are the favored and considered most cost-effective options.
Any other questions? This is great, thank you very much, Mr. Fetter. Thank you.
My pleasure. I will, I will leave some business cards with Justin, and if any of you have follow-ups, feel free to take one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are now going on to Town Okay, we are now going on to town manager's report. And, Mr. Town Manager, we do have a couple additional slides. Is that part of the water presentation or is that something, something else? Just because.
Those are the capital programs that are included in the bottom.
Okay.
Once after the Q and A slide.
Yep.
Are the capital programs that are included in the rates that are presented in that presentation?
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
And this question about what projects are funded. What did they do with that?
Thank you. All right, take it away.
Well, I think the first town manager's report is the fire station update. I'm going to have CUD Director Bob give that update, please.
Should only be another 45, 50 minutes to do this report. Just kidding. As I do monthly, giving you the update. Really pleased to say that we are now at 75% completion of the project. We're at a point now where we're actually looking ahead and scheduling furniture installation. We expect all that to begin around the time of Thanksgiving. So we're about three months ahead of where we thought we were going to be when we started. From a budgetary standpoint, we still have more than 50% of contingency left. At 75% completion, we don't anticipate that there's going to be much more coming out of contingency. I won't say nothing, but it's a really healthy place to be right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you've been by there. I mean, they're rocking and rolling.
So Bob, just roughly any anticipation on the, the date where they'd be able to occupy the building at this stage?
I think at this point, I mean, we're looking at, you know, probably December 1st. I mean, we've started to have, I had a meeting yesterday with the fire chief and the assistant talking about coordination. IT's been involved in that in terms of how seamless we can do that. But we think that December 1st is kind of what our target date is right now.
Okay, great.
It could be a little sooner. It could slide a little bit, but we don't really see that happening right now.
Okay. No, that's great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Ruley? Okay.
I'll yield back my 49 minutes.
Next, I'll be very brief on this one as well, considering where we're at in time. I just wanted to personally say thank you to the committee of Bridgewater. I'm really excited to be here. I want to thank the council. I thank the residents that I've been able to get to meet, and obviously our great staff here. In the future, particularly with community engagement, I think it's really important to engage with the public and the community. And I'm really interested in hosting some listening sessions. And so in the future, I will definitely be announcing some dates and some times that we'll be doing that. I'll mix some with the senior center to get that time, an evening time period, and even a Zoom component for, you know, families who maybe can't get to town hall at some different times. So we'll be announcing that a little bit later on on the forthcoming council meeting and then promoting that on our website and social media. So I just really want to say I'm excited to be here and I'm excited to get to work with you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just comment on that real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Justin, the only thing I would add to that, too, is if you have ability to jump into some of those committee and board meetings, I think that's a great opportunity to engage with some folks, too. I know you mentioned that a lot during the interviews and when you came in, but just to reiterate, that's a good opportunity to kind of pop in and give up your personal time at night, too.
I've talked with Josh about that, and that's definitely on the, definitely on the radar. I'm excited to, to work with our boards and commissions. I've already started speaking with someone already.
Thank you.
Any questions or requests of our town manager for future, future meeting? Okay, sounds good. Next, I put an agenda item here for discussions on water quality and capacity. We've obviously got a lot of water and sewer talk already tonight, but it was all on the, all on the topic of rates. So on the topic of capacity and, and quality. I want to just throw this on briefly, but before we have a, a brief conversation about it, I wanted to just kind of defer over back to our town manager, as I know that he's working hard to meet with department heads. You know, Mr. Ruley, Zoo, who is, who is here, and they're going to be coming forward with a presentation maybe later this summer. So I wanted to just kind of defer to you to kind of kick things off, and then we could, you know, chat amongst ourselves. I want the residents to know that we're actively, you know, working on this. It's a top priority and want them to see that we are, you know, doing our very best and we're, we're getting the ball rolling. It's Justin's, you know, first meeting, but we are, we are actively working on it, so please.
Yeah, no, I definitely want to credit the team that we have here in place. This is definitely a priority for us. It's definitely a priority for me, coming in here, speaking with the council and the community. We're meeting with Bob. We're meeting with Zoo. We're going to collaborate. My hope is that, you know, maybe a summer meeting or, you know, a little bit later on, just having a, a meeting that we can focus on what we're doing. There's a lot of good work and a lot of hard work at play. We're applying for grants. We're being proactive on things. And so I think it's really important to really be clear and concise on what we're doing, and we'll be working on having a presentation for the council and the community forthcoming in the future.
Great, thank you. With that being said, I'll just open up this discussion amongst the council. Does anybody have anything they wanted to bring up? Mr. Kennedy?
The thing I'll start with first is, just so you're aware, and what I was made aware by a resident and a business owner in my district, apparently we have two sewer pumps on Bedford and Winter and another one on Fireworks Circle. I'd like the water department to look into this, or sewer department. Apparently, the business owner has been the one maintaining these, but they are pumping public sewage. So he's requested that that get looked into before, and he's brought it to my attention as well. So I wanted to bring that up on a public forum and just see if I can get some answers for him. Because if we have a private business owner pumping public sewage and maintaining those pumps, I'm not really sure that's appropriate. So I can give you the exact locations on that in an email, but I'd just feel like that to get looked into.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments from councilors?
Yes, I'll go. So I've looked at the master water plan from 2024, and I was just wondering, the Great Hill tank is 98 years old, and there's a fire flow deficiency in the western portion of the town. It doesn't meet codes. I don't know if we've been working on that. And 43% of the Great Hill tank and 40% of the water, Sprig Hill tank is unusable because it's low, it's located below the evaluation. So I'm not sure what we've worked on in this. And the last thing that in the master water plan, it states, as discussed previously, a potential source includes Vernon Street wells. It's recommended that the department complete an engineer evaluation, install test wells, and perform short-term pump tests to gauge water quality and capacity. So I know those permits were expired, but we're supposed to get them back, so I don't know if we did that. And we talk a lot about water, but if you look at the permit that we have from Mass, Mass Department, the reason why we get restrictions on our, on our water because eight of our permanent wells are located in a sub-basin, 24024 and 24106. So the water gets depleted in that area. And that's why from May 1st to September, we have mandatory restrictions, which are stated in the town's water permit. And with all our construction, it states that the resident's gallons per capitol is 65 gallons or less. And so if we use more, we get restricted more. So we really need to look to see maybe where we're pumping, we're getting all our water from, because in that basin, I mean, they put mandatory restrictions in that permit where the police can come out because that's how depleted that area gets. So I think we need to start looking where, where we can draw well from besides that. So those are my points.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussions from councilors?
I know this has been an ongoing topic, at least on some public forums online, and I've also been asked in person about this multiple times. We seem to have some conflicting opinions on how much water we have available, how much more building we can do. I would just appreciate, and I know a lot of residents would, just some, just either raw numbers or maybe some explanations if we're reaching that limit as to why we're continuing to build into that area. The water department has, from my understanding, expressed that we are really reaching that limit. So I know that we have our water bans, and as Vice President McGrath stated, we do have a, a ban regularly anyways, just imposed on us that we have no control over based on our water tables over there. So I would just like some clarification from the town, the water department. How much building can we continue to do? There's multiple projects, not just the residential's going in on Broad, but there's stuff by the nip and just where we're at. So we can let the residents know why this stuff is going on, that we actually have capacity, or that if we don't have capacity, what is the reason for the approvals on these? I think we just need some answers for that, and that seems to be a very common thing that is coming across.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Oh, you want to go first?
I'm just saying ditto to what.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because that's what I get the question. You know, how are we allowing more development if we are told that we don't have?
Big capacity, yeah.
And hopefully, that presentation, you know, late August, maybe early September, because, I mean, the, the summer will come to an end, and then we won't have as many restrictions, but people are asking right now.
Yes, I wanted to make a comment that I think that Bridgewater needs to develop its own capacity versus doing a buy-in from another source like Aquaria or something. My feeling is that if we tie in with another system, what'll happen is they can raise the rates on us at any point, and we will be hostage to rates being raised. So we need to develop our own capacity, and hopefully, we will generate enough income to be able to take steps in that direction.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Great, yeah, I would just like to echo what Mr. Kennedy said. I think that, you know, it does appear that we do have some, some room for, for development. We don't know exactly how much. We have obviously a lot of usage in the, in the summertime, and this is when we start talking about it a lot, as, as Counselor Lindy said. And then the summer, you know, goes, and then we have less conversations about it. So it's good to be proactive, and I'm looking forward to the joint presentation that Justin mentioned earlier, coming together with the department heads and seeing exactly where we're at so we could have a unified and, and clear message to residents that they can understand why they're, you know, suffering with some water quality issues. And we say that we have bans and capacity issues, but we're also, we have some development. So I think that we just need to be able to answer those questions honestly and, and transparently. So thank you guys for the discussion. I'm glad that we, we had some, some good ideas and good conversations here and threw that out, and I look forward to continuing having those, those conversations. Next up, committee reports to, do any chairs have committee reports? Dr. Perry, did you want to start?
That's sure. Strategic planning met July 10th to get the ball rolling on goals for our new town manager. So we've, we have got that ball rolling. We'll be meeting with some other people that we need to, to get some more information, to, to set those goals, but we'll be meeting again beginning of August. And hopefully, that and one other meeting before we try and present our review of information back to the council, which we're, we're shooting for that first meeting in September.
Great, thank you. Any other committee reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on next to legislation for action. So first up, we have Resolution FY 25-014, a resolution requesting an independent operational and financial review of the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. This measure was not referred to committee. 14 days have elapsed per section. Was that 17 of the council rules and procedures? Therefore, this measure may be considered this evening. So just a little bit of a background on, on this. We discussed this last time where I introduced it. Again, it's a request that the school committee do an independent review. This is not an, an audit. This is something that I think that a lot of residents have, have asked for. And just a note to you all that I, I had the Rainham Board of Selectmen reach out to me individually, and we, we discussed it, and they were interested in doing this. They put it forward at their meeting, and they voted 3-0 unanimously to, to do something similar. They would like to join us in, in the effort of requesting that the, the school board do something like this. So again, I just wanted to bring, bring this up. We can consider it tonight. So I'd entertain a motion for approval, and then of course, a discussion.
I'll do a motion for approval.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Strickles. So it's a discussion on the resolution?
Yes, could, could I ask, who's going to pay for it?
Yeah, it's a good question. And, and it's, it's a great question. It's a question that everybody's answering, and it's not something that we know definitively right now. We're requesting that they, that they do the review, and I'd imagine that if they do agree, it would be contingent upon understanding who's going to pay for this. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know that Town, Town Manager, Justin Castillo-Davis, he said that there's an opportunity for some grants where we can take grant money and do a review for not only the schools, but also operationally for the town and the town's structure. So that's an opportunity. And I don't know exactly how much grant money we could get and if we're able to, to fund both of those efforts, but I know that that is available. So am I, am I wrong about that?
Unfortunately, I called DOR today. I spoke with Mr. Cronin. Those funds were not funded in this budget for that grant. We'll explore some other opportunities, but unfortunately, that program isn't funded right now.
So I stand corrected, but we are exploring other funding opportunities, and it may be something that we could discuss with the schools of how we're going to, to do that. But, you know, it'd be great to know exactly where those dollars are coming from, but right now, this is just kind of a request that they look into it. Counselor Lindy?
There is a possibility that if the public body requests it, the state auditor's office can do some of this for us. But it has to be a vote of, you know, either the council or the school committee or potentially both. I think we should look into that.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds a great idea.
I don't know what the cost is, but it may be less than a outside auditing firm, just.
Yeah, it could be. I spoke to a firm that did a similar review in a, in another municipality, and I believe that cost was about $50,000. So it's not an exorbitant amount, but it is, it is a certain, it is, it is a cost, and every dollar counts, especially as we, as we know here. Any other comments?
I just want to reiterate my comments in the last meeting. I think without having a source of how we're going to fund this and not knowing the exact dollar amount versus the exact benefit that we get back from doing this, I would vote against it. And then my second point is, again, I mentioned this last time, asking another elected body in town to do something, whether through resolution, or I guess that's the only option, through resolution. It just seems off to me. I mean, if the voters have the opportunity to vote those people into the school committee, they should hold them accountable for doing things like this. And then my third point that I propose, too, and this is something we haven't talked about yet, but is well within our purview to my understanding, is should we instead be focusing our operational, I don't know, review on the fact of having a district in Bridgewater? Would that be a better use of our funds or approach to say, how is this district benefiting Bridgewater? And then bringing that back to the citizens as a holistic look? And I know we've talked about how that, you know, could be costly and legal and all of that, but maybe that benefit to understand that is better approach for us here as a council to understand how that's going to impact the citizens of Bridgewater. So that would just be my alternative to propose. And a couple of reasons why I would vote no against this particular one. Although I'm not against an operational audit or review or whatever we want to call it, I just think it needs to organically come from the school committee itself.
Sure.
So again, like we spoke last time, I would support this. It is a resolution, so we're not forcing them to do anything, but it is asking for this. I think this is what citizens want. And I agree, and we kind of said this last time, I said this last time, I agree with Counselor Murphy's opinion on not trying to have another legislative, elected body spend their funds, but I do, I find the rub on this where it meets the town council is this is 60%-ish almost of our town budget, and we are on the town side having to do cuts and things of that sort. And I think that this does tie in, at least in the financial side. Maybe if this was something like we were trying to get them to change curriculums or something a little bit more in-depth that they handle, that would not be inappropriate. That would be inappropriate to do that. But I, I think because this is a budget issue, I think this does fall under something that we should at least suggest to them. Obviously, we're doing cuts on our side or trying to, and trying to work with that as best we can. So I would support something like this. And I also, this has been a discussion with quite a few people, but, you know, the school district is something that I think we should look into a bit more. I agree 100% with Counselor Murphy that that might be something that we spend time on. I think that there is an appetite for changing the way that we operate with this in general, and I think that would be a positive thing for us to look into. Having a school dis, having a regional district when the towns are significantly smaller in population size makes a bit more sense to pool resources. But there's plenty of towns that operate at a smaller population than we have, and they have a complete school system that they control within their town. So I think that would be something, you know, that we should be looking into and discussing as well.
Thank you.
I guess just one more if I could.
Yeah, of course.
Passionate about this, but I think the last comment I'll make is I think we are so far off from what the school needs to function appropriately to what we're able to fund. And even though we're giving or, or approving this increase, we're still far from what our kids in Bridgewater and Rainham deserve, what our teachers deserve, and where we should be as a school district. And I think that's going to show over time.
And I think that's going to show over time, unfortunately, that our schools maybe aren't living up to that, but this seems like such a small piece of a bigger problem that we need to solve, and we're not looking at it holistically. The fact that we're off by millions of dollars on funding our school appropriately, is this really going to amount to anything? I mean, even if it's 50, 100 grand, how are we still going to make up the $6 million or $8 million that we need to fund our schools appropriately? And so I think that's where we need to look at things. I think that's the picture we need to take. Again, I'm not opposed to this if it came from a school committee itself, because saving any dollars, like Counselor Kennedy just said, is appropriate and would benefit us, but there is a bigger, larger picture that we need to keep addressing and keep talking about, because even though we bandaged it this year, there's still a huge gap and a huge shortfall that we need to address here, too. So just want to make sure that we keep eyes on that and keep talking about that, too.
Sure. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. You know, I echo those sentiments. I, you know, the situation is, obviously, as we, as he was just mentioning, we're putting a Band-Aid on the situation this year. I think as we found out from the results of the override vote, that the public wants to see some more transparency on the operation side. So potentially, I think, you know, by supporting this resolution and putting this forward to the school committee, and if they can bring forth some information that shows some clarity to the public, we're going to be in the same situation at this time next year, probably talking about another override. But if this information comes forward showing, you know, the school is spending monies appropriately, and there is certainly the need, again, as mentioned, you know, six, $7 million short. We know, again, size-wise for the town, size-wise for the school district, we're way behind in both budgets. So again, that's going to need to be made up at some point in time with some sort of override. But again, to get more information on how we've been operating on both the town side and the school side, this will hopefully create some transparency for the public. So the next time a vote comes up, potentially, there'll be more support for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I wrote a resolution to do a feasible study on redrawing from the district, and Mrs. Robinson asked to put it on hold. She was going to look into it, but it never came, so I can re-put that in there so we could do that, because I think we absolutely need to look, our schools are overcrowded, and talking about an override, again, we need to look at how do we stay in the school system? We have no control. We can put this forward, but they can say no. They say no to us on different things because they're their own entity, so we can say whatever we want. The good thing is, we had a 2024 audit, and they're supposed to be finishing theirs. So I did request that, and you can see different things that are in there, you know, at least will give you a basic. But I would say, I would like to put our money and go for a feasible study of redrawing from, because I looked up a lot of it, and I don't think it's going to be that bad. And I think even Rainham has had enough, and our schools can't afford it anymore. So I would say, we put our money to that, but I like your idea.
Thank you. Any further comment, Counselor Lindy?
I think we have to look at all the ideas, everything that's been brought up here tonight. I think this is a good step forward to get public confidence, to know what the dollars are being spent for. I don't think they're going to any nefarious purposes or anything like that, but I think there were a lot of questions that came up during the override that people don't understand. One of the school committee members actually asked for this herself, and I think there is some appetite on the school committee's level to do this, and, you know, maybe a way for, maybe the auditor's the way, but maybe there's a way that the cost could be split among the three entities, you know, portion from us, portion from the school department, a portion from Rainham, you know. I think get it done, get it all out there, get all the information out there, and then people will trust the process or believe in. We didn't have, there wasn't enough time to even talk about an override. The voters spoke pretty loudly and clearly, but sometimes if you have different information, you might think differently.
Sure.
I think it's worth a shot.
I'm Sal America.
I just wanted to reiterate what other people have said, and I've had many constituents tell me that they don't trust the budget process, which is very unfortunate, and I think that this would be a major step forward in establishing trust again in our town.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Could I add just maybe one, one small thing? If we might change the language a little bit to say a resolution to request studying an independent operational financial blah, 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 just to not make it like we're going to actually demand that we do this, but let's look into it, let's talk to the school, let's talk to Rainham, everything that you've been doing. Let's make that our resolution, that we're going to pay attention to that and get some more information about it before we dive into it and figure out how we're going to pay for it.
The resolution's attached to a letter, so I don't know if changing the resolution would be sufficient, and I don't want to take time reading the whole letter through, but I'll leave it up to you if you want to make an amendment.
Well, let me see if I wrote the right words down. A resolution to request studying an independent operational financial review of the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. Does that make sense?
Merrily, so what are you, who would be doing the studying?
I think we'd have to set up a group to do it, like three counselors, something like that, to talk to people from this Rainham.
Just to regress, so I believe, again, that the resolution is basically directing the school district, the school committee, to take a look at. I don't know if we want to do the legwork as a council here. I think we're looking for the school committee to do the work for both Bridgewater and Rainham's benefits.
I think what we've got to do is have people from Bridgewater and Rainham asking the school committee to do it, you know, so you'd have...
Point of order, Mr. President. Do we have a second on the motion, or are we in discussion?
Yeah, so do you have a motion for amendment?
Yeah, I think the way I read it, right?
Did you just read it one more time?
Just changing a couple of words in it. A resolution to request studying an independent operational financial review of the Bridgewater-Rainham School District. So it's just changing requesting to request and putting studying after it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, okay.
I've just been listening and observing, and I think based on what is on the table now, I think what is conflicting for me is if we're requesting something be studied without a method of who is to pay for it, with the overall outcome being, are we splitting it? Is the school committee paying for it? Are the two towns paying for it? I think you really need to be careful of establishing who would be responsible for paying for something, because if the school committee just deems that they're just going to study it, could both towns look at the school committee and then say, well, you're funding it if we're not able to participate in the process? So I think it kind of opens up a little bit too much of a can of worms of trying to figure out who's paying for what and who's responsible for what.
I would agree. I would say that that's what the studying is, to figure out who's going to pay for it, who's willing to pay for it, who can pay for it, and how much it would cost.
Counselor Lindy has a hand.
So there's an existing infrastructure that was used during the override. There was an ad hoc committee created that both the council president and Sonia Rizon, and there was a finance committee person and a select person from Rainham and school committee people. I would suggest that it get kicked to that committee to see if there's an appetite to do it.
Yeah, I think that...
Or whatever, I, just a thought.
Yeah, this is simply requesting the school committee to hire a third-party group to do it. It's, we wouldn't need to hire, rather, set up a, an ad hoc or kick it to anybody or ask anybody to study anything. This is asking them to go ahead and hire a firm to do this, and then we would love to have those discussions with them. And I like that we're being prudent and thinking about the ways that we're going to pay for this, but I think that we're not even close to being there yet. Not that we shouldn't ignore the fact that it does need to get paid for, but this is essentially expressing our opinions and our willingness to have them, you know, at least look into something like this. But please, Counselor Kennedy?
Yeah, just on the amendment, I don't really think it changes the content of the document or what our ask is, so I don't really see it being necessary, because we're not, we're not forcing them to do anything. They can come, they can say this resolution is meaningless because we are an elected body separate from them, and it doesn't mean anything. All we're doing is expressing that we would like to see this happen. They can come back and say, no. They can come back and say, we want to split the cost, we don't have the money. They could say, we are going to pay for it ourselves, it's a good idea. They have the opportunity to do whatever they want with this. It's just asking them to consider doing this. They're welcome to come back and with any number of answers for us, but I don't think having a study to do, requesting that they do a study to look into this, I don't think is any different than asking them to look into this. I think it's kind of the same thing.
Any further discussion? And again, this is just on the amendment, so let's keep it to the discussion of the amendment.
Okay, on the amendment, I think we should just do the review, okay? And I would ask our town manager, our new town manager, if he would be able to find the funds, the $50,000 somewhere in the budget so we could do this, because I think having this study reflects the will of the people. The people said no, and they said no in Rainham also, and I think it's incumbent upon us to find the money and do this.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the amendment before we vote on the amendment? Sure.
Yes, in regards to the amendment, I agree with Mr. Kennedy. I don't, I don't think we really need a study to look at this. I think we should leave this, again, as written, let the school committee, whether it's through their subcommittee, start looking at the situation, and if down the line, you know, they come back and say they're looking to do this, and then they're requesting a certain amount of funding, then it comes back to us to find the funding for whatever percentage we need. So I think written as is, the resolution probably stands as fine. I don't think we need a side subcommittee of our own council to look into this any further.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Debbie, maybe we have a roll call on the amendment?
Sure, Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Ms. Ellenberg?
No.
Ms. Strickles?
No.
Ms. McGrath?
No.
Mr. Loretty?
No.
Dr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
And Mr. Lindy?
No.
And in favor, zero opposed.
So I just wanted to circle back on something that Counselor Ellenberg said about us just paying for it. I think it does go back to the conversation of this is a district problem, and I don't think us as one town entity should be responsible for the full amount. I don't think that that's what our voters would approve or have an appetite for either. I think it would need to be a even or split like our school district budget is split. I think that's something that we could potentially have an appetite for. It's consistent based on how we have paid for the school district in the past, but until we have that established, and until I hear that Rainham has an appetite to do that, it's very hard for me to support just sending a study out there for an independent third party that we have no influence potentially on hiring that we're then having to pay for.
Just, I want to interject just briefly, and you guys continue your debate, but I want to be clear that the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District is an autonomous body.
Correct.
You do not control the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. You appropriate funds to the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. I don't know how they'll respond to this. That will be up to you all to figure out, but I just want to be clear, you're now talking about giving them directives and funding things that force them to do certain actions. I guarantee you that will end up in a lawsuit, because they are an autonomous school district. A regional school district is an autonomous body, separate and apart from us. This started, I believe, as aspirational, and essentially, it's a resolution, which is what we're talking about as a resolution. So respectfully, a lot of the talk is now going into the logistics of how this gets done by this body regarding an autonomous, separate body, and I think really the focus needs to be on if you want to approve this resolution.
Thank you.
I was just going to make a motion, move to questions, so we can vote.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, do we need to?
We got a vote on that motion now, right?
Yeah. Made a motion, move the question, and I second it, so.
Can we do a roll call vote on the motion?
I think just do a voice.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Hunt?
No.
You're just voting on the, moving the question.
We're just moving the question, voting on moving the question.
Oh, you're just moving the question?
Correct.
We're not actually voting on it?
Correct, yes.
Oh, okay, yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Sorry about that. So now we're back to voting for the, voting on this measure. Can we do, I meant to do a roll call on the, on the measure.
Yeah. You're on hand and motion, a second.
Could I just ask one question? If we're advised that this may turn into a lawsuit, shouldn't we just vote against this?
I didn't say this one.
No, not this.
I was saying, this is a resolution, this is a statement.
Point of order, Mr. President, there's no more discussion. We've made a motion to end discussion, and that passed 9-0.
I was just asking a legal question before I voted.
I'm just making a point of order, so we're following the appropriate rules.
Agreed.
It was moved, and we have to actually vote on it now.
Okay. Please.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Strickles?
No.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Loretty?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Hunt?
No.
And Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Six in favor, three opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next one, Order FY 25-071, an order establishing a tax increment in financing district for 60 to 86 Broad Street. So this is brought by myself and Counselor Murphy. So this is just basically the foundation of what may or may not become of a TIF district. We wanted to bring this forward to refer something to our newly established TIF committee, a TIF ad hoc committee, and that's what, that's what this is. So I would entertain a motion to refer this to the TIF ad hoc committee.
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Strickles.
Second.
And second by Counsel McGrath. Any discussion on referring this out to the ad hoc committee?
I believe, according to our charter, there will be a 30-day wait period on this before the committee will be able to activate, according to the charter.
That I'm not sure, I may have to ask counsel.
I don't agree. I think that the ad hoc committee was created some time ago. I don't know if we're at the 30-day mark for that. It's not 30 days from the appointment of the remaining two.
It was created today when we finalized the two people to be in it.
You ratified the appointment of two people today. You did not set up a committee today. The committee was voted, it's 30 days from that date.
It's been over 30 days since we formed the committee.
Even though it wasn't really formed as a committee yet?
It was formed as a committee, it just wasn't, there weren't enough people in it. Sometimes we have committees and boards in this town, there's not enough people in it. They still exist as a committee until you appoint enough people to hear.
Just wasn't activated, okay, okay.
Okay, all those in favor in referring to committee?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. Any opposed?
Yes, opposed, no, yeah, whichever.
Two, two opposed? So six, two then. Okay, motion carries. Next, we are moving on to, we don't have any old business.
Yes, due to the time, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion on extending?
Do we have to have a time specific?
Do we have to stipulate time?
No.
No.
You, each, each time you take something past that time, you just take a vote to take the next agenda item. That's how you do it.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think you still have a few agenda items left.
Yeah, just have new, new business and then citizen comments.[1728.71]
Yeah, so just vote before each one of those things to have those things addressed beyond the 10:00 PM.
Okay, so each, with each item?
Yeah, and it's iffy if it's actually 10:30, because some stuff got changed in the admin code, but I know you all change your time, so I think to be safe, 10:00 PM makes sense.
So I'll just expand my motion to include new business.
Second.
But any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, okay, new business, FY 26-007, acceptance of gift, this is from the Lepecy Family Trust, this is, we're looking for a motion to refer this to Budget and Finance Committee, do I have that motion?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Strigles, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, Order FY 26-008, loan authorization for Phase 2 of water, wastewater treatment facility preliminary design and engineering of phosphorus removal upgrade project, we're looking to refer this over to the Budget and Finance Committee, do I have a motion?
Second.
Second, can we just get a little update from the town manager regarding this?
Yeah, definitely, for the record, please, town manager, Casanova Davis?
I'll briefly, just quickly say, this is part of the design and engineer work that gets us to the SRF funding, and SRF funding usually allows for affordable programs to finance projects like these, so this is the design and engineering, I don't know if you need any more further information, but we have a zoom if you need further information.
Okay, and all those in favor referring to Budget and Finance?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Nope, okay.
And Finance Committee.
Oh, and then Finance, yes. Next, FY 26-009, loan authorization, community septic management program, Title V homeowner loans, and then, did this come from the town manager as well?
Yep.
I believe so.
Just a brief synopsis, this is a program that allows the town to, to provide funding to homeowners who, maybe their septic system might have a failure, it's affordable programming that lets us utilize these funds, the town will put a betterment lien on a property, but it allows them to pay over 15 years, 5% for the replacement of their septic system, so it's a really worthwhile program, the last time we replenished this was in 2021, and we've allocated over $900,000 to our residents to utilize these funds, so it's cost effective, because a septic system today is $30,000 to $50,000, it's pretty expensive, so it's cost effective for homeowners.
Sounds good.
Okay, so do I have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
Second.
Thank you, any, any discussion?
I just want to say that clients of mine, friends, and a few family members have actually benefited from this program, not just here, and in other municipalities, it is an excellent way for people to be able to stay in their homes long-term and do some of the deferred maintenance to their properties that they seamlessly wouldn't have been able to afford, so I think that this is a great way to ensure that people can age gracefully in their home while making sure that the infrastructure of that home stays intact.
Thank you.
Just one comment, just for clarification through you to the town manager, it's not, we're not giving them the money, it's just providing a loan service for them to fix that, the septic tanks.
It's essentially a loan program, yes.
We're not using taxpayer funded money to pay for people's septic tanks, repairs, and things like that, okay?
Correct, well, the taxpayers are.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor referring to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, next up, Order FY 26-010, post override supplemental appropriation, and I will refer back to the town manager for this one.
So as part of the council's decision to support the additional allocation of around $850,000 for the schools, Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional School District, myself, our finance team, we worked to find a pretty expeditious way to fund this additional appropriation, and so as part of our recommendation, as outlined in the order, we're recommending we use about $450,000 from Employee Liability Stabilization Fund, that's, that fund is essentially used to fund employees sick and vacation buybacks, we're recommending some changes in various departments, including the town manager's office, I did write a memo, I don't think it was part of the agenda, but essentially, we're going to freeze the assistant town manager position for about six months, we're going to reduce the hours for the executive assistant to the town manager, in the finance department, we're going to freeze the administrative assistant in the assessor's office, and we're going to reduce the hours for the administrative assessor, administrative assistant in the collector's office, and the police, we're going to freeze the police cadet position, as well as the captain position, in the library, we're going to freeze the archivist position, based on some, on these changes in personnel, we're going to realize some savings in our medical and healthcare insurance line, which equates to about $50,000 as well, and so we think this is a prudent course of action, based on the time we have to get this appropriation, we're going to continue to work throughout the fiscal year to find, realize savings, or work with our partners, our staff, and we'll make decisions throughout the fiscal year, so realize savings, and then set us up for fiscal year '27 budget, so that's where we're at with our recommended way to appropriate these additional funds.
Thank you, so just a little bit of background, we've had some discussions on the timeline, because we do need to either decide as a council to either appropriate or not by August 11th, the last time I checked, and I believe that's, that's the date, so we do have, in order to remain compliant with, with the charter, and advertising, and, and meeting and meeting and scheduling, we do have to make some, make some moves here, so what we would look to do is to refer this to our finance committee, so that they can weigh in on it, it is advised that we keep this at the council level, and the reason for that being is because if we refer to committee and then refer back, by the time that that happens, we won't have enough time to advertise and, and meet that date, however, I'll speak with Councilor Murphy about this, but I'd like to have the ability to at least put it as a discussion item for our Budget and Finance meeting, and then we could have that discussion, and then obviously, we will have discussions here as a council tonight, to the extent of which we would like to have the discussion, and then we have a budget hearing, which will have to be at a special meeting, we're looking at August 5th, I believe, for a special meeting, but we do need to get that done before August 11th, so we would be seeking to keep that at a council level, so we could continue to have those conversations here, and meet those advertising requirements, and then again, the, the third vote would be to actually vote to refer this to advertising for publication for a public hearing, because just like our regular budget process, we do need to have a, a public hearing where we can have the public vote weigh in on it, and then we will have the ability to, again, weigh in on it, and, and then, of course, vote, so with that being said, did you have a comment, Mark?
No, what motion do you need us to?
Yeah, so, I'm gonna need three, if you want to take this first one, so the first would be a motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
Motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
And thank you, Councilor Strigles, any discussion on referring or the, or the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, the second would be a, a motion to retain at the council level.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
For discussion, so you're saying that we need a special town council meeting before our next scheduled one in order to meet the timeline of this?
Yes, because I believe our, our first August meeting would be after, we only have one August.
After the 11th.
After the 11th.
All right, so we need to meet the week before.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're just, we're entertaining an August 5th, that's not set in stone, but we'll obviously make sure that we all are notified, and then it has to be advertised, so we'll, we'll make sure that we nail that down by the end of this week, and everybody will, will be notified.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Can we strive for that August 5th date, because other dates of the week are harder?
Yeah, yeah, Tuesdays seem to work well for everybody, so I don't see any reason why that won't be the date.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of retaining at the council level?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, and the last one would be a, a motion to refer this to, to advertising for publication of a, a public hearing, which the tentative date is the August 5th date, so do I have that motion?
Moved.
Second.
Thank you, and any discussion?
Just one thing, I just, again, based on, you know, the work that was done by the new town manager, I want to just applaud the, the work to, to find the funding, so we could avoid, you know, further cuts in other areas, so I, I thank him for his efforts in this.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
And I just want to add the finance team into that, too, the, the town manager and his team.
Thank you.
I just want to compliment the town manager and his team for finding the money here so we can do this, thank you.
Any further discussion or comment? Okay, all those in favor of referring to advertising?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so next, we have FY 26-011, this is to establish water rates, this is based on the presentation that we had tonight, I'll defer to our town manager for any additional insight.
No, I think the only thing that I would reiterate, that you heard from Toby from the presentation, is with this structure that we have, the average rate payer actually would save under the structure in terms of, in comparison of utilizing the previous structure, I think that's the only thing that I would emphasize, I think it's a prudent plan, and, you know, I appreciate the work that went into it.
Thank you, so again, we're looking to refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, do I have that motion?
So, second.
Thank you, Councilor Perry, any, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, next, similarly, we have Order FY 26-012, this is for the sewer rates, I'll spare, spare Justin deferring over to him, this is the same, same thing, except this is now with the, the sewer rates, and as he said, the average, the average payer would see a decrease in their bill while we're increasing revenues, which I think is a great thing, so do I have a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Ellenberg and Dr. Perry, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay. All right, last for new business, we have zoning ordinance amendment, FY 26-001, MBTA final compliance ordinance for the town of Bridgewater, and this is brought forward by Councilor Strigles.
Thank you, Mr. President, so as everyone is aware, the town council did approve the MBTA, MBTA communities overlay district in our town, and we did apply, and we got a conditional approval, so with that, there were certain conditions of things that we did need to amend, based on our current policies and things that they felt were in conflict, so I do want to bring Bob Rulli up, since he has been a point person on this for our town, just to give a little bit more color on the situation.
Thank you, in the letter that was in your packet from the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, on page two, the last two paragraphs, the office called out that we were limiting development to one building per lot, that would put us under the compliance number, we can correct that, and then the second one was just some language that made it seem like we were capping 15 units per acre, which was not what our intention was, I mean, the Form-based code regulates how much can be built on a site, so they just wanted us to clear that up, so I, we're just asking to have it referred to both the CED and Planning Board for a joint meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Strigles, any discussion on referring to, again, the motion is to refer to CED and Planning Board?
I just wanted to make sure that the CED means the council's CED.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clear it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I had, I had a couple of questions, on this chart here, it says that gross density per one acre is 15 units, submitted was 30 units, now why are we submitting something higher than what is required? Because the residents of Bridgewater, in general, do not want MBTA housing here, why are we above the minimum level?
Because that's the type of zoning that, and density that's allowed in the various portions of the Form-based code, 15 units per acre is the minimum that the state requires, we went through a process to pass the Form-based code, I can appreciate that some residents may not like it, but let me just explain what would happen if we didn't have the Form, the MBTA communities, Gina talked about money that the Hanson's got for the development rights for Hanson Farm, that wouldn't happen, they would have to give that $3 million back, we have a one-stop grant in to improve piping coming from Plymouth Street to the water treatment plant, so we can eliminate brown water, that money would not be, we would not be eligible for that money, so these are simply corrections to the language of something that's already been adopted and approved by the Executive Office of Livable Communities.
Okay, so you have various things that have been negotiated in this entire package, like the water mains and, and so forth.
Those aren't negotiated as part of this package, because, and I've mentioned this many times, because we are in compliance with MBTA communities, we are eligible for over 14 different funding sources, as part of that, we apply for grants because we are in compliance, the first two questions that are asked on the applications are, are you in compliance, and do you have a moratorium on development?
So we are in compliance with merely 15 units per acre, we are in compliance.
That's not the plan that was submitted and approved.
I know, and that's what I'm questioning, why was the plan greater than what is the minimum?
Because that's the plan that made the most sense for the development that we were looking to have, it was a public process, it wasn't done in a vacuum.
I know, it was done the first meeting I showed up at my new term, and did not have an opportunity to ask questions then, I would like to make an amendment that this be reduced to the required portion of the MBTA.
I would strongly recommend you don't do that.
Well, the, I know, the, the motion on the table is, is to vote for this, so I guess, do you have a, we could ask if there's a second for the amendment?
A second for discussion.
Okay.
Well, again, we're, we're referring to the subcommittee, so they can review that, and they'll come back with their recommendations, and at that, usually that point, the council will discuss it further, and if any other amendments want to be made at that time, usually that's brought up at that time.
That's true, although by passing this now, are we not endorsing the submitted plan, which is greater than merely the required plan?
This is just to refer.
This is just referring to those subcommittees, Ms. Ellenberg, and then it comes back to us after they review it, so further discussion by the council will be had at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of information through you to the town council clerk, would that meeting be posted as a quorum might be in attendance?
Yes.
Yeah, could you?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay, just asking specifically.
Do you want to keep your amendment?
Well, I don't have a second, so I.
Oh, no, no, Councilor Strigles seconded it.
I give a discussion.
All right, all right, well, I just feel that it is responsive to the citizens of Bridgewater to limit the MBTA development, now I know that's not where you're at, but that's where the residents of this town are at.
We have to vote on the amendment, so do you want to keep it or rescind it?
So I would like to.
So just, just so I'm, what exactly is the amendment on the actual legislative form? I just want to make sure we are all voting the same thing.
The amendment is for the required column on page 124 of our agenda.
123. 123.
Mr. President, I believe she's referencing in the actual mass.gov letter.
And I don't think we can amend that.
And I don't think we can amend something that we didn't write.
Right, no. That's why I'm asking, I'm not sure what we're amending on this particular thing that's before this council, that's all you can address, so what I see before the council at this point is what it says in principal uses, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting on a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential building on any lot, becomes, no dwelling shall be erected except on a lot fronting a street, and there shall be not more than one principal residential use on any lot, and then 9.9, you're asking to amend number two, 9.94, number two, regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for the two MBTA COD districts is 15 units per acre, that's what currently exists, to becoming, regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for two MBTA COD districts is at least 15 units per acre, that's what I see before you, I, I could be.
Exactly, exactly, so I was asking for an amendment to put it at 15 units.
That, that's, so that's what it presently says, based on what I see here, it says, regardless of other standards in the underlying zoning, the allowable residential density for two MBTA COD districts is 15 units per acre, that's what it currently says, so it's, the, the current legislative action is for it to be changed to at least 15 units, but you're not even voting that, you're just voting to refer it at this point, but if you want to amend, I, I, you'll have to specify what you're amending, if you're just keeping it at 15 units, and that's not an amendment, that's just you vote against it, right?
Yeah, so do you want to, do you want to amend the actual piece of legislation to remove this?
Well, I was going to say, and it has, and it has the multifamily, family unit capacity, required is 1,400, submitted is 2,100.
Yeah, we can't amend that.
That's not what's before you, though, what's before you is, you can see, if you look in your, look at legislative form, in this. and this is, the legislation is FY 26-001. At least from what I have in front of me, there are only two things that you're seeking to change by way of new ordinance, and that are those things that are highlighted. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, but that's what I see.
Yes, so it seems that, Ms. Ellenberg, the only thing that you can amend is 9.9.4 requirements, as council has read. You would basically want to strike the number two to remove the increase of at least 15 units per acre. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on that amendment. Right, we could, we could vote on that amendment?
So, yeah, so what she then would be proposing is there be no actual number in there per acre.
So just striking it?
Yeah, which you're obviously not going to be in compliance with MBTA.
No, 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 I'm not asking to just strike it. I'm asking for it to be replacing the preliminarily determined and submitted amounts in the agenda.
Potentially puts us out of compliance.
That's correct.
For the total number. You know, we can't look at one line.
And that's not, respectfully, that's not what is being asked of us. It's simply to say at least 15. So it's an amendment to what we applied for.
So obviously, Ms. Ellenberg can make whatever amendment she wants. But I think she just has to specify in the language of what is in front of you, what that amendment reads as so that there's clarity about what everyone's voting on, that's all.
Okay. I will withdraw my amendment because it's going to go to committee and I intend to raise this subject again when it comes back from committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask one question?
Yes, we're back to now referring.
That's what, Mr. Rulli, I'd ask, do we have more than one MBTA compliant district in town?
Yes, we do at the present time.
So where are they? Is one down near Waterford?
One is within the radius of the existing station. The second is anticipating the relocation of the landing to the Spring Street Lot.
So why would we spend all that money moving it or any other stuff when we're already MBTA complied?
I think it goes to the larger understanding of how we do economic development and revitalization, how we're trying to build out the central business district and maximize the number of people that would take advantage of commuter rail.
That's going to cost a lot of money. All right. Thank you.
I just have a quick overall request. Mr. Rulli, you addressed some of the benefits the town gets from being in compliance. This is to the town manager, obviously, because I can't ask you directly. But is there any way we could quantify that, maybe for a future town manager report, to just show us or talk about in a way what grants we are eligible for because we're in compliance with the MBTA legislation? I think that would be great to demonstrate to folks. Because we've passed this, we now have access to these grants.
It's fairly simple. If we can do that, we also will indicate what we've already applied for.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
I think that'd be helpful for everybody.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, so all those in favor referring to the CED committee and Planning Board for a joint meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll need another motion to extend.
Make a motion to extend the meeting for citizens' comments. And council comments, we'll put them together, sure.
Second.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're now up to citizen comments. Due to Massachusetts open meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. Anyone may come up to speak at this time for up to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Anybody? Okay.
Everybody wants to go?
Citizen comments are now closed? Oh.
Sorry for the gimp. Bob Cormery, 65 Grange Park. I just want to say thanks for moving the tiff forward. You know, three months now, I'm excited to get to work, to actually get to work for this town. Like I said from the beginning, I'll work with whoever you appoint collaboratively, transparently, and I'm very excited to get started. Also, it was a really great presentation tonight, especially in the rate structure. Obviously, I'm sitting back there knowing this is going to make it more difficult to make this work, but I'm excited to try to get creative there and again, pay our fair share with new development. So I think it's beneficial for the long run for everybody. The last thing I was going to mention, unrelated to development, on the operational audit, great questions on how we're going to pay for it. There are a lot of companies, I've used it in other businesses, that share their fee in the expenses that they're able to save the entity. And so some of the largest operational efficiency companies in the United States, that's their model. So there's no upfront cost, they get paid when they save us money. They take a portion of that. One of the largest companies in the country, we have a franchise owner who's very successful in doing that, that's a Bridgewater resident. So just, I can give you the name of that company and that person, but I suggest you look into it because it's literally no cost out of our pocket unless they save significant funds in, I think, 14 verticals of operations. So think telecommunications and logistics and things like that, which the school system uses all of those. So that's it, just an idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Carlton Hunt, 80th and 80th Street. Thank you for a long meeting. According to the title, "An Order Establishing a Tax Discretion Financing District", what's the scope of that? Because the title of that says, "The boundaries only". It's not talking about the tax break it's getting. And we heard already tonight, something about a diff might be a better benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have to come up and speak? Okay, we'll move on to council comments. I will go ahead and start with Mr. Lindy.
Oh, first.
Good information presented tonight about the water sewer rates. I think we need to do that and then to go back soon on the water. I know it's summertime. What's an extra meeting or two? Hate to say it, I know they're vacations and stuff, but it's something that our residents have really wanted. We have in our rules and procedures that we have two meetings a year on major subjects. That's a major subject, so I'd like to see it sooner than later. I want to thank the town manager for the information that he's provided on finding a creative way to get to that funding that's necessary for the students of the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. Personally, all I'd like to see more is budget information like what our previous interim or acting or whatever you want to call, Blythe, town manager, on our budget side. I think our budget presentation was much better than what I saw from the school side. I'm not saying they don't need it, but I understood it a lot better. And it was explained with, you know, Larry Guarini and everybody else from the finance team. So I think that's what we're looking to see. And, you know, I looked, it's, the state auditor thing is in the enabling legislation. It's right up front, if you just look up the legislation that establishes that audit. And it has to be a body that requests that that happens. Now, I sat on a regional school committee, so our attorney is 100% right. It is a separate, complete entity and we can't tell it what to do. We can just suggest that they give us more information and be a little bit more transparent to get the voters to understand what they're actually paying for. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hunt?
Okay, I wanted to thank, if people are still watching TV at this point in time or wherever they're watching the meeting, those who came out to talk, it was very nice to have them there. I got some very interesting things from them. I want to congratulate the Community Preservation Committee for the work on the Hanson Farms preservation. I think that's a big benefit to the town. Today, I was listening to the Mass Municipal Association. You can go in and listen to some of their programs, so I highly recommend that for all councilors. We haven't had any real initial training yet on being councilors here and the MMA is there for us. They have opportunities to connect and learn and advocate for all sorts of things. So I really recommend going on and doing MMA and just taking some of their classes and catching us up on things. And, oh, okay, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. First, welcome to our new town manager and thank you for squeezing out a million dollars out of the budget in your first couple of weeks here. And thank you to our finance team who also worked to do that. I think we can all recognize and openly say that that is not a sustainable plan for the future, but it does buy you some time and us some time for you to get your feet wet, understand the lay of the land, and then know, and we can all acknowledge, some tough decisions are going to have to be made for FY 27. And that process starts almost immediately. So I know that you've committed, I've committed to dive into that, to work with the school committee, to work with you and all departments in town to find a sustainable way that we can continue town operations, but do it effectively and be able to provide citizens with what they're looking for. And the last piece, I just wanted to say thank you to the Fourth of July committee. It was an absolutely 10 out of 10 day, perfect celebration for our town. It was great to see everybody that lined the streets. I think it was the most I've ever seen at a parade and at an event. And so overall, incredible what those six, seven people do for our town. And so many people get to benefit it, not just in Bridgewater, but beyond Bridgewater. And then thank you for town manager for walking with us in that. I think that was a huge show of community engagement so folks can see you and meet you and see you as part of the team. So just an incredible day overall and happy to end on a good note, so.
Thank you. Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Yes, again, I also want to welcome and congratulate our new town manager on his first meeting with us. And again, kudos to his work with the financial team to find those savings, to provide the school with the additional funding that they're looking for. So hopefully that, with our process, gets accomplished here in the coming weeks. Also, even though I was not here for the Fourth of July in town, I want to thank the Fourth of July committee for all their hard work once again. And for those that potentially came on out to do the cleanup that they were asking for, I thank those people that came out because back in the day when I was president of it, my reward the next day was the trash break up, so. But again, thank you to all those that came on out. It was a perfect day to remember where you were for the Fourth of July in Massachusetts. It was a wonderful weather day. So that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Strickles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to town manager Casanova Davis for finding the funds and for the call. You heard the reluctance in my voice of utilizing stabilization funds and really were able to break down the creativity that went into the funds that you thought would be best suited for this situation. So I really do appreciate that outreach. It made me feel better about the situation. And it showed the commitment that you have to engage not only with us as councilors, but to be transparent with the public. So I really do appreciate that. I appreciate everyone who attended the meeting tonight. It was a long one. And I also want to echo the sentiments of my fellow councilors of the small but mighty Fourth of July committee. Unfortunately, I was in bed for most of the Fourth of July, so I was not with my fellow councilors marching in the parade. And I had significant FOMO when I saw the photos of how great the parade was attended and didn't get to see fireworks for the first time in 37 years. So ultimately, it was a great day and it is such a commitment to our community and our community always shines brightest on the Fourth of July, so.
Thank you. Councilor Ellenberg?
Yes, I just want to say that people can excuse me that I had cataract surgery today. So that's why I'm here with a magnifying glass and this patch. But I felt the meeting was too important to miss because of the topics that were on the agenda. So here I am in all my glory.
Thank you. Councilor Kennedy?
I'm going to reiterate some of this, but I'll try to keep it short. Thank you for taking the time to speak with multiple councilors over the last week, meeting with myself, being receptive to ideas and laying out some ideas that you have and trying to run that by us. That communication is going to be very important. Thank you for taking the time with the budget. Thank you to the finance team to do in the same. This is exactly what we need and it's important, it's very important that we unfortunately make some difficult decisions based on the situation we're in. Thank you for the public for staying with us this long, if you're still here and turning up. And thank you again to my other councilors for having a productive meeting. I think this went well as well, so thank you all for doing this. And last but not least, the Fourth of July committee. My family had a great time and that parade was fantastic and the fireworks show was amazing. So thank you guys for spending the time on that.
Thank you. And Vice President McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been voicing my concern about the importance of having, using our committees, commissions and boards. And we have a water and sewer board and there's no one on it. This establishes the rates for our sewer and water. They should have been doing this and they work with our town manager. They recommend improvements to our water and our water treatment. Their advisory board to the public directors and establishing rules and regulations. So we really need to fill our boards and we really need to start using them. The other thing is July 26th, between 4:00 and 7:00 at the town landing, the farmer's market's there. And I encourage Bridgewater businesses to come out and be vendors. I've gone to the past too and most of the vendors are out of town. So it would be helpful. I mean, it's only $30 for a table and that's pretty cheap to be at a farmer's market. So I'm going to try to support them and try to step out of my comfort zone and get a table and sell some of my items for my hobby. So I hope you guys come out. It's been very, a lot of people have been there, but the vendors have all been from out of town. So it'd be nice to have Bridgewater vendors there. Thank you.
Thank you. And as for me, you stole my comments on the town river landing. I encourage everybody to go out there and I saw that we had some money that was earmarked for that project and I'm looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. I'm looking forward to phase one as Alacerta kind of circulated to everybody. I'd like to see that get done hopefully by April and this is a step in the right direction. It's a great resource for our town. Thank you to Justin for being so available and I appreciate meeting with you over the last couple of weeks. You just got started and you're doing a great job so far. And thank you to my councilors for a productive meeting. It was a long one, but we'll see you guys back in a few weeks. We'll have that special meeting and go over the budget that was, the supplementary budget which was proposed. So that's all that I have. Thank you, everybody, again. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
We're out of here.